Welcome to the fourth hearing of the Select Committee on the Response to Major Floods Across New South Wales in 2022. The inquiry is examining a number of matters relating to the preparation, coordination, and response to the North Coast and Western Sydney floods by the government. I note that this committee was established by the upper house of the New South Wales Parliament and is separate to the New South Wales Government's Inquiry into the floods. We are separate to the Parity Government. I acknowledge the traditional custodians on the lands in which we are gathered today. I pay my respect to elders past, present, and emergent, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who may be joining us today. Today, we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including the federal member for Macquarie, Susan Templeman, the member for Hawkesbury, Robin Preston, and the mayor of Hawkesbury City Council, councillor Patrick Connelly. We will also be hearing from the Hawkesbury City Chamber of Commerce and the Western Sydney Business Centre. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence today to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearings. Today's hearings are being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish for the committee's proceedings. While the parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to be a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents to the committee, they may do so through the committee staff. In terms of audibility of today's hearing, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. Finally, could everyone in this room turn off their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now wish to welcome our first witnesses. Now, Ms. Preston, I remind you that you do not need to be sworn, as you are already a member of the State Parliament, you've already been sworn. To ensure integrity of the commission, we will ask Ms. Templeman to swear. So, starting from Ms. Templeton to Patrick Connelly and then Ms. Richardson, if you can state your name, your title, and either swear an oath or affirmation. Ms. Templeman.
Thank you, Chair. Susan Templeman, the federal member for Macquarie. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms. Preston? Oh, sorry, sorry. My mistake. I apologize. councillor Connelly.
Patrick Connelly, Mayor of Hawkesbury City Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, help me God.
Ms. Richardson.
Elizabeth Richardson, General Manager, Hawkesbury City Council. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, under the standing orders, there is a provision for a short opening statement if you wish to partake in that. Ms. Templeman, Ms. Preston, and councillor Connelly, I assume that all three would like to do an opening statement. I'll start with Ms. Templeman.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming to the Hawkesbury. I wanted to touch on a few things. One is about the scale of the impact that the 2022 floods have had. One is around the impact on businesses, another around the impact on individuals, and I want to touch on housing and evacuation routes, and I will do that as succinctly as I can. We're very conscious that the effect we've had in the Hawkesbury is different to what you will have seen in the early part of this week on the North Coast. But the context I want you to have is that our 2022 flood came on the back of fires in 2019, 20, a small flood in that year, a year later, a major flood in 2021. So it cannot be seen in isolation. And this community has been through those multiple traumas, three natural disasters in the space of two years. And that gives a different context to what people are experiencing now and still trying to recover from. In terms of the impacts, it is over a different scale. We've had eight residences completely destroyed in the Hawkesbury, 627 homes damaged, 164 of them have been deemed uninhabitable. So that gives you a scale of the numbers. But what you've seen today in touring around the Hawkesbury is some of the infrastructure challenges that we have. Massive holes gouged out of the side of the riverbank that are affecting roads, which no longer have, they just don't exist anymore. They're affecting businesses like our caravan ski parks, and they're affecting individual homes as well as our turf and farmers. And that is taking an enormous emotional toll on people, and we got a glimpse of that just a little over an hour ago, when you saw turf farmers who are suffering physical and mental health consequences, not just as a result of the natural disaster, but of the very slow response that has been delivered to them. And I think the example on Cornwallis Road, where impacts from 2020, 2021, and now 2022 are ruining their businesses. These are farmers who cannot farm, they cannot plant, they have no confidence of the integrity of their properties. What these farmers need is for someone to fix it. It may well be a council responsibility, but it is not good enough for the state government to sit back and wait for someone to fix it. This has to be fixed with a sense of urgency. And if it had had a sense of urgency in 2021, we would not be looking at giant cavernous holes where pasture and road should be. So that goes to the emotional impact that this is having on businesses. But there's another impact, and that is, it was alluded to this morning, actually, and that is about the consequences. So this community was not entitled to small business support for people who were not directly affected by floodwaters. If you actually flooded, you were eligible for the state government's small business support that is available. What you're not eligible for is the special package for businesses indirectly affected. So businesses that couldn't operate because they couldn't get across the river, businesses that have no customers because their customers have been flooded. And that relates to people like a butcher I speak to. The ski caravan parks have customers anymore, their offices are closed. The retailers are looking, have been looking at dead streets during the flood, dead for a couple of weeks, and now it hasn't come back. Now, they are denied assistance. And what really galls them is that they're in New South Wales, and other New South Wales residents are entitled to assistance with the same set of circumstances. Now, they're asking, why is one group of people in New South Wales, who've suffered a 40% drop in their turnover, not entitled to the same support that people in another part of New South Wales, who've suffered 40% of their turnover, get? So for the Hawkesbury people, there's a question amongst our small businesses about that inconsistency. They've also raised with me the slowness of processing, the small business support for those who were flooded. We drove past a business called Tractor Eight to Eight in the tour this morning. That business waited several months for their small business funding to come through. He was flooded, he was entitled, but it took a really long time. And that, from a cash flow perspective, has been appalling. I want to touch on the individual impact, and the main thing I want to talk about is housing. We appreciate the terrible demand and need for housing up north, but equally, there are people here who don't have a home to live in. One of the big gaps, and unfortunately, Resilience New South Wales nor any other agency has been able to solve this, and that is to provide temporary housing for people to have on their properties. You saw we have large acreage that many people who were flooded have. They want to be back on their property. It's a perfectly reasonable thing to be asking a government to support them with, to be able to have a temporary dwelling on their land so they can do the repairs to their home and make it habitable, but also be able to be on their land. That's been denied people here. They do not have access to support to do that. And the second part of housing is that I'm receiving emails now from people telling me that they are being given advice that their emergency accommodation is coming to an end, and they have not been able to find another rental property. One case in particular, a lady called Natasha tells me that she's only got a couple of weeks to get out of her hotel accommodation that she's been in, not through choice, but that's because that's all there is. Her rental property, original rental property, has not even been assessed properly for repairs. So she has no timeline on when she's going to be able to go back to her original rented home. So she has to find something, and there is nothing in this area. We are absolutely chockers in terms of rentals. People are, homes are full, there's nowhere to go. So that's some of the scale of it. The biggest single failure by the state government has been to resolve the riverbank destruction that has occurred. The committee, you saw a glimpse of it in Cornwallis, but all along the Hawkesbury River, there are giant horseshoe-shaped gouges out of the river on people's land. They want to fix it. They want guidance on how to do it, and that has not been provided to them by any New South Wales Government agency. And to me, that is the biggest failure we face. Had that been done post-2021 floods, we would have been in a much better situation and more prepared for when the 2022 ones hit. So unfortunately, we're looking at a lot more damage, a lot more heartbreak, and a lot more cost because of the failures to address that issue. I'll leave it there, although there are probably 10 other things I'll happily contribute as we go through.
Thank you, Ms. Templeman. Ms. Preston.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, committee, for the opportunity to speak today. After three years of floods, we had the Black Summer bushfires in 2019, 2020, and a drought and COVID-19 pandemic. The Hawkesbury community is actually exhausted, and there is still much work to be done as we recover from this year's floods. Whilst the water has subsided, it hasn't flowed away. It sits in ponds that were once fields of grass and bushland. Mold abounds in homes, businesses, and schools, a legacy of the dampness and moisture that still prevails. We had Collo High School actually shut down for a time because the mold was rampant there. And the teachers again had to go into the work-from-home and teach-from-home mode there. I know we live in a floodplain, that's a given, and in the conversations that you had with some of our locals today, they understand that as well. And those that were new to Hawkesbury had never seen the river misbehave in the way it did. They were anxious at last year's floods, the collapse of Bell's Line of Road in 2021 exacerbated their anxiety. Their response to the floods this year was different. People prepared, they evacuated well in advance, they made plans to stay at friends and families' places on higher ground, or they relocated close to their workplace. The evacuation centres, I only had a few locals sleeping there. I would go there every day. Susan, I know you were one to go there as well, and it was different to last year. People thought they didn't want to spend overnight in an evacuation centre, even though there was provisions for them. So they took their animals to safer places and found friends that would take them in. And the community does that, Hawkesbury does that. We welcome our locals and look after them. Not one life was lost this year in Hawkesbury. Charities worked out a system with the SES. We had Mountain of Joy, and we had Hawkesbury Helping Hands, making food hampers and provisions for people who were stranded and isolated. And we had a system in place where we were able to dispatch food hampers and medical needs via the SES and our volunteers packing those. A caravan park that I visited, anticipating the worst, moved 50 boats and 120 caravans to high ground and saved all of them because they'd been through this. We had a dress rehearsal twice before. So this time round, we saw the warning signs and managed that. The new Windsor Bridge recovered quickly after the river peaked at 13.8 metres on the 9th of March this year, although approaching roads were flood-prone. I must compliment the way the New South Wales Government conducted cleanups of household waste. The support by the New South Wales SES and additional support on the ground from the RFS, the Police Force, Fire and Rescue New South Wales, we had Surf Life Saving, Marine Rescue, Volunteer Rescue Association, Ambulance New South Wales, St John Ambulance, and countless members of the community who just rolled their sleeves up and got in and helped. And I know as I walked around Cock Street and James Marlin and the South Windsor areas that hadn't experienced this before, I watched them as they were so grateful for the support with truckloads of volunteers and fire and rescue from out of area. They came into Hawkesbury and they were there for them because we had elderly folk who were with their family putting mattresses out there, they were putting out all their possessions were out there. The one thing we didn't want was it for it to sit there for days as a reminder of what they had lost. So that quick thinking by, I think, the government and the skip bins that were put out there, I think that was probably one of the best things that was managed in the floods, and I've had no one actually come to me to say that they were left behind. In fact, we had bins coming and going, even around where the turf farmers were, we were able to help them there. So I think that was a really good feature of the recovery. My recommendations for the committee to consider are firstly, the riverbank restoration needs immediate action, and Susan, I know you and I are both on the same page with this. Property owners want to be able to complete the works. They're actually not asking for a lot of government support in this way, they're asking for the ability to be able to cut through the red tape. Now, I know that that was something that was focused on at the last floods. I think we have been slow to actually appoint compliance officers that were going to work with council to cut through that red tape, to advise them on how they could restore those banks and let the landowners go in and do it. So I encourage that to be supported going forward because they're chomping at the bit to do that. They can't leave these riverbanks gouged the way they are now. More public work support for Hawkesbury City Council to resolve the massive infrastructure repairs. I think at last count, Mr. Mayor, there was around $67 million dollars' worth of broken infrastructure. That's not normal infrastructure programs that are in the Hawkesbury. We saw today Greens Road, we toured out at Pitttown Bottoms Road, Cornwallis, you saw the devastation there, and River Road on the other side with the Hillshy Council and the damage that has done to the banks there. That needs to be brought up today as well. Currently, Hawkesbury City Council and the Hillshy Council are struggling to complete these repairs with current staffing levels and are falling behind with other scheduled works. The potholes are enormous in the area. Trucks continue to move up and down the area. Turf farmers and Pitttown Bottoms Road and Cornwallis Road, all those areas where you've got massive movements of trucks that are only trying to make a living with their businesses, they are gouging out the roads, their local roads, their council roads, but trying to keep up the pace of the repairs is almost impossible for the local council. Telecommunications need to be improved in remote areas such as St Albans and Lower McDonald. A telecommunications tower or satellite phones must be provided as part of an early warning system. The Bureau of Meteorology needs to have water level gauges in the McDonald Valley for accuracy in establishing when to evacuate, instead of the locals looking at Facebook pages from people that are giving them a hint of where the water's up to, their area. Also, I'd like to recommend establishing an SES kiosk in McDonald Valley, St Albans Territory. Train volunteers to operate and maintain an SES boat and have them service the needs of the local community where the boat stays in their area. They become an island, they become trapped when the waters come in. So if you've got a local volunteer SES group, that could be on guard, on hand, and have those resources, they can move the medicines and the food around in their immediate area without having to wait for the SES to come forward from their headquarters, which is at least 30 minutes away by boat. Invite the Insurance Council of Australia to establish an affordable home or business insurance policy that covers a flat amount of, say, $50,000 for a cleanup and rehabilitation of a site. Currently, premiums cost around $20,000 a year to insure your home. The homeowners, us in particular, are saying to me, they don't want that, they can't afford that, they get, they live in a floodplain. But if they were to pay a reasonable premium that would give them $50,000 to clean up their property after a flood, they would be really willing to pay those premiums. So I would like this committee to look at talking to the Insurance Council of Australia and see if there's buy-in there. The evacuation route, we've looked at that today at Pitttown, it needs to be upgraded. I won't talk further to that because you've been on the tour. Now, the drainage system needs an overhaul. Drains need to work whether on crown land, council land, or private property. I'm pleased that Hawkesbury City Council is in the middle of conducting an audit of the drains, I welcome that. But once this is complete, funding needs to be available to clear unblocked drains and the relocation of problematic drains. You've got people on their property that's fixed their drains, and guess what? It flows onto the next person's. So there's no one coordinating those drains in private, public, or crown lands. There's no one coordinating that as such, and I know councillors are making an effort to report back on where these drains are, where they're problematic, but you've seen what happens when drains aren't maintained. We have very old drainage systems in Hawkesbury. The other thing I want to talk about, and I know I'm quick for time here, I'm thinking we should be looking at a levy for any new developments that have an impact on the Hawkesbury Valley. In those new developments, a levy would be placed per property, if it was a subdivision. That levy would then go towards a fund that maintains and upkeeps the drainage systems that are flowing into the Hawkesbury Valley that no one is taking responsibility for. No one is cleaning these drains out. So I really think that's an important thing that needs to be looked at and perhaps funded in that regard. And the other thing is, and I'll just say it, raise the Warrigama Dam wall. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Preston. councillor Lord Mayor Connelly.
Thank you. Lord Mayor's a promotion, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to start by obviously thanking you for the opportunity to be here and talk to the inquiry today. I'll try not to, I'll try to skip through all of the figures you've already heard now from Ms. Templeman and Ms. Preston. I'll start by saying that as a result of the experience we've had, unfortunately, we have had the opportunity to learn a lot of lessons. We've developed a lot of stakeholder relationships over the last few years. And my view first and foremost, before I go into some of our learnings, would be that the various emergency services, support agencies, council, we're all in a very strong position to deal with the flood in 2022. And operationally, in the first instance, it went quite well. An EOC was stood up, agencies worked well together, an effective crisis response was provided. And I want to start by acknowledging therefore the excellent work of the agencies, but also our Hawkesbury City Council staff. And I think it's an example of why we need locally-led response by people who know the area, because it works very well. Having said that, there's always learnings we can take from any of these events, and I just wanted to go through a few of those now. I think there is a need to enhance the capability and the capacity, importantly, of state agencies such as Public Works, PWA. We experienced resources reallocated away from the Hawkesbury as these agencies balanced competing demands. We understood that at the time, what was being dealt with on the North Coast was unbelievable, and we understood why that happened, given the constraints. However, it would have been, we think that needs to be addressed as part of the aftermath, that the capacity of those organisations need to be increased. I'll just touch briefly on Cornwallis as the example that's been raised today. Cornwallis, we engaged PWA to be our lead on that immediately after the flood crisis was over. We understood that, yes, it's a council asset, those drains, but council is not set up to deal with infrastructure failings of that size and scale. It's not our expertise, it's not what we're staffed for. So we recognized that immediately and put our hands up for help. We engaged PWA. PWA are doing a great job, but it has been a slow process, and that's certainly what the community is feeling at the moment. As you heard from Ms. Preston, we've had about $60 million worth of asset damage. Council's normal capital works programme that we're staffed to deliver is about $25 to $30 million. That's our business as usual. We've still had our business as usual capital works to deliver the last two years, as well as delivering somehow an extra $60 million of capital works. That, to me, is not a sustainable model, that if a disaster happens, a local government just has to deal with that. There needs to be some more capacity in our state agencies to be able to pick up the burden when that sort of thing happens. I'll also just touch on the riverbank restoration, which was a major issue after the March 2021 flood, and I'm sure will shortly be a major issue for us again. It's true that the New South Wales Government has funded caseworkers through LLS. That was a very slow process. I think the recruitment took almost a year, but they're on the ground now. However, that's, from my perspective, a very small part of the problem. Having caseworkers to help applicants through the red tape is great, and they do need that because, again, council's dealing with many, many more DAs than we're staffed for as a result of this crisis. However, what was really needed, and what was spoken about at the time, was a streamlined process, and probably, I'm not an expert, but in my view, a change of legislation that enabled people not to have to go through and tick every single box that normally has to be ticked. I saw letters that, you know, we were getting DAs in at council, and we're following the law, and we're asking for, you know, 15 reports to go and restore the riverbank, you know, at a cost that might be three or four times the cost of actually doing the work. There's a cost, there's a time, and it just means that what we have experienced, and I think it's, most people in our community know this, is that a few people have tried to do it the right way, and everybody else has just done whatever they wanted because it was too hard to come and do it the right way and talk to us. So we get a poor environmental outcome, we get a poor community outcome, nobody's winning. Whereas if there had been an immediate response, as was indicated at the start, to have a streamlined approach, and potentially some change in the planning legislation to allow for that, we could have got a much better outcome there. We unfortunately have a second chance at that now, so I would urge the inquiry to look at that. We also note that despite a number of requests from the LeoCon, SES Metro denied requests for a liaison officer to be based in the local EOC to manage communications between the EOC and the SES headquarters. It's not until the last days of the EOC's operation where we received representation from SES Metro at the EOC as part of the rapid damage assessments, and our view is that this placed an undue burden on the local SES commander, sorry, the local commander of the EOC. Following from the 2020 and 2021 flood emergencies and the bushfires as well, council employed a dedicated resilience and emergency management coordinator at the start of this year in January. That was a position that we just decided we had to fund, there is no funding for that position, but we are an at-risk council. Our experience during this crisis is that was invaluable, to have somebody who was expertly trained, knew our systems, knew all our key people, who we could base at the EOC and therefore, which in the past would have been the role of a director or the general manager at council, it meant that all those senior council staff were still able to be at council and in the community delivering an effective response, and we knew we had an expert representing us at the EOC. We think that that is a model that should be replicated. The costs of emergency management and resilience planning currently being borne by ratepayers. And given our experiences, where our community, we think, was better prepared, informed, and experienced as a result of having that position, council suggests that the government funding should, either government funding should be provided to support high-risk councils, or as we've already requested, and so far not having luck, councils be given the opportunity to raise a special charge on their ratepayers to cover this expense. So council did put in a request to the local government minister last year that we should be able to charge a $15 levy per property to be able to fund emergency management, given the risks that we face, both from fire and flood. That was denied, and we were told to go through IPART and seek an SRV. We think that's something we should be looked at. Loss of communication is an important, an ongoing challenge for our community during emergency events, especially in the McDonald and Collo Valleys and surrounding areas. In terms of communication to the community during the emergency, at times, there was confusion, also over evacuation orders, and we would welcome improvements to these, including mapping and the timing of the orders being issued. So we did note that often evacuation orders were issued, they were timestamped about 45 minutes before the community saw them. They don't have maps on them, so they were quite confusing for people because they also don't seem to have any local input. Sometimes they're referred to, I'm sure they're technically correct, but they're using language, suburb names, sometimes that are just not familiar to local people, cause panic and cause the wrong people to evacuate, or people to not understand that they're in that right area. It would seem that that's a responsibility that's now been taken by Metro, but if it could be kept local, or at least have some local eyes over it, we could probably get a better outcome. Also note that community recovery does not appear within the scope for the inquiry, but I did want to note the considerable work for council that we still have to do, both in terms of community and infrastructure recovery, following obviously significant back-to-back flood events. We've opened recovery centres following the events, which are sort of a one-stop-shop model for people who have been displaced or otherwise impacted by floods. They can come, talk to council, and talk to all the other services as well in one That's a good model. We're now moving to an outreach model. Unfortunately, we know we still have over 250 families in temporary accommodation and many more residents who are yet to access support. So moving forward, we would suggest that Resilience New South Wales needs to prepare detailed recovery plans. So moving forward, we would suggest that resilience New South Wales needs to prepare detailed recovery plans as a matter of priority. In the event of a more significant flood event, the recovery centres that we have at South Windsor and Wyomans Ferry are very unlikely to be fit for purpose. Another couple of metres of water and we're in real trouble in terms of where we can do any of this stuff. So we need to look at, you know, we need to have somebody doing the planning of what happens in a larger event. Finally, whilst flood mitigation is not specifically mentioned in terms of reference, the delays to the Warrigama dam raising project need to be mentioned, given the very significant impact the project will have on future events. Both the additional evacuation time and the lower flood peaks provided by the raised wall would drastically reduce the impact of events like these in our community and the huge financial impulse on taxpayers and ratepayers that follows them. It's hard for us to understand how the project has taken as long as it has so far to be considered. And I would urge the New South Wales Government to get on with the job and just protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off the very first question. This afternoon, we visited Cornwallis Road and we met four local farmers, Emmanuel and Charlie Saliba. They're at their wits' end. I was born in North America. That's a bloody Grand Canyon in Sydney. And I can tell you, if we had such erosion and such destruction on a scale of that in Sydney's east or Sydney's north shore, the state government would have stepped in and provided assistance by now. So, Ms. Templeman, do you think there's a role for the state government because of the massive destruction that's occurred on Cornwallis Road? It's a Grand Canyon.
It is extraordinary to me. It is extraordinary to me that the state government hasn't stepped in sooner when recognising the scale of it. The lack of urgency in 2021 led us to where we are. But right now, you look at that Grand Canyon. It is an enormous, it's changed the course of the river. And it cannot be allowed to have a measured approach. It needs an urgent approach to it. Now, I recognise that council has got plans in place. My question would be, what more can be done? How quickly can it be done? It is actually an emergency for these people. So it's the sense of urgency and emergency that I'm missing.
Now, Mr. Mayor, would you agree that road damage, potholes, Cornwallis, Cornwallis Road, those are the major issues that are pressing the council at the moment? And the damage bill is beyond what you can stump up?
Look, there's many more issues in that, unfortunately. So I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that statement. There's certainly major issues.
Comment on the roads issue.
Yeah, we certainly have major issues we're facing. A lot of this is funded through disaster funding recovery arrangements, so it's not so much about a damage bill for council. It's about having the capacity to deliver. We have recently been granted additional funding for temporary, on a temporary basis for asset repair. So we're now going to have a temporary asset repair team. That is something new, however.
Okay, but you've been down to Cornwallis Road, haven't you? That is not a pothole. That is a Grand Canyon in the middle of Sydney. This is Sydney. It's major destruction. Why are you not on to the state government and saying, this is beyond our capability? This is major erosion. It's changing the course of the river. And we were there, we were warned not to go too close to the edge because it may in fact snap off. And you see, heaven forbid, there's more rains come, there'll be more erosion. Can you understand why those farmers are so worried? They've seen their land values drop. They've seen their property wash away. Can you see why they're upset?
Of course. And so I might not have been clear earlier in my answer. PWA is a state government agency, so we immediately after the flood engaged PWA to look after that for us. So it is being overseen by council as a council process, but we did put our hand up immediately after the flood and say, this is beyond us. And we needed the state government to step in, which they did. However, I agree with you that, given the urgency of the situation, it doesn't seem like anybody's got the authority to step in and override all the approvals required and get it done as quickly as it needs to be.
But don't you admit that it's costly, it's dangerous? It's costly and dangerous.
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Now, in your opening statement, you made reference to, this will be my last question, sorry. You made reference to resilience New South Wales needing to detail community recovery. Now, we had damning evidence on the North Coast about resilience New South Wales not stepping up, not being there, and community members having to support each other rather than relying on resilience New South Wales. What did you mean by that they needed to detail a community recovery plan?
Yeah, thanks. So our experience of that during the time of crisis was quite different. I can't speak to what happened anywhere else, but in Hawkesbury, like I said, the crisis response was, I think, excellent. It was, you know, everything went as well and could have from an immediate crisis response. We had recovery centres stepped up immediately afterwards and we'd learnt from 2021. So community recovery here, it went quite well. I guess the point we're making is that if we'd been in a slightly different situation, if we'd had more floodwater and, you know, and the community centres and locations we were using for community recovery hubs had not been available, there really is no planning on what comes next.
Chair, could I add to the point about resilience? I think we've all experienced incredible people on the ground working with resilience New South Wales. We had the advantage that they'd done it before. They'd done it for fires, some of them. Many of them had done it for floods, so they're back for a second time. So our experience was that the recovery centres were able to be operational fast. But the people within them are very constrained by what is available in terms of support. The housing people are constrained, the service New South Wales people are constrained because there is, I had people say to me, I went to the recovery centre and they were very nice. There's nothing they could do to help me. And when issues like mould in public housing are raised, that's not something that the recovery centre has capacity to support. So I think we all acknowledge the people we had on the ground in the recovery centres and the resilience New South Wales people at a local level have been doing the best they possibly can with the resources and within the constraints that we have. And I think that's worth recognising. But hey, that's the advantage of this being the third time in two years.
Thank you, Ms. Templeman. Deputy Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'll direct my question to you, Ms. Preston. And we'll go back to Cornwallis Road as the example. We all toured there today. We saw the physical devastation. We heard from the residents down there, the mental devastation that they've suffered. But also is the economic devastation, that they cannot generate income from their properties. They've had to let staff go. They're not spending money back in the community, so it has a snowballing effect. We've heard from Mayor Connelly, and it's quite obvious that this is above the capacity at the moment of the council to do it. And he said that Public Works has been engaged. But do you think somebody in government should be rattling the chain a bit harder at Public Works to get some urgency happening down here?
Look, I tend to agree with you and the landowners would agree with that as well. The fact that Public Works are working with council, tick that box. But there needs to be more of a sense of urgency. I mean, this is, the devastation on that side is not, it's extraordinary. So I think there needs to be an opportunity for government to have in place a team like we did with the bushfires. When the bushfires came to Hawkesbury, they changed the legislation. They allowed people to live on their land in temporary accommodation for, I think it was up to two years. Is that right, Mr. Mayor? I think, pretty sure it was. They could put containers on there as well. We need that to happen for people to be able to get back on their land now with the floods. But this is not getting back on the land. The land has gone. There's nothing left. And so with such a catastrophic situation, I would like to think there could be a strike force team in the state government that can go around and oversight major infrastructure repairs like this. We don't have that yet. I would think that could be a recommendation going forward from the committee to work with councils, but to pretty well say, look, we're going to take this. We'll do this job. Because what you have is a list of preferred contractors that work with the state government on big projects. Why doesn't this come into that category as well? So broaden that category and have the team be able to go out and start straight away. The other thing is, council are busy doing potholes. Even their staff for that, you can't keep up with the demand for that in the ordinary council road area. So clearly, that backlog, I don't see that clearing for years. I don't know how you're going to do that. So that is another part of this holistic approach that the state government could do in lending that support on the local roads as well. I know we look after state roads. Cornwallis is a local road, but it's massively damaged. Let's have a team of experts come in at that level and take charge and get the contractors in that they know are proven contractors to handle this scope of work.
That's all from me, Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Barrett.
I'd like to talk donation management, if we can, just briefly. I know we've talked about the experience you've had here over several different events. You're very close to, I guess, the bulk of where donations come from in Sydney. Given the fact donations actually can do damage in one of these sort of events, how have we learnt that donation management process? What have we seen? How have we got better over these different events?
I'll start there, if I may. The GiveIt platform has been a terrific platform for people to be using if they know how to use it. And it has avoided the problems we saw in 2021 where people ended the recovery period, if you'd like to call it that, with a warehouse full of stuff that didn't have a home to go to. I think there's more, there's capacity for more work on this because a lot of people have not understood how to reach out through GiveIt to access support. And this is a community that is more used to giving than receiving. And there are people who refused to accept anything in 2021 and it's taken a second flood a year later for them to recognise that it's okay to ask for help. So I think we've seen improvements from 2021 to 2022 with a greater channeling through GiveIt and connecting it with really good community groups like Peppercorn and Hawkesbury Helping Hands to be able to channel that support where it is. One gap I think we really have is about a better way of coordinating the offers of human help where people and organisations wanted to go direct to a community rather than through a platform. So there's some more work to do there.
Thank you. Sue.
I just wanted to ask, if I could, about your resilience officer. When the event actually happened, the recent event, was the resilience officer a sort of go-to person? Was the resilience officer somebody who worked with resilience New South Wales? What was, and the benefit of having a resilience officer already? Could you just touch on those briefly?
Sure. So the resilience officer was based at the EOC, the Emergency Operations Centre. So we effectively were there almost 24/7. That officer was there for most of that, to be honest, while the immediate crisis event was there. The benefit of that was, that was an officer who is highly experienced in disaster management, very familiar with council's plans and what has to happen and in what order. And the additional benefit that we saw compared to previous floods is that because we are a small organisation, if you take a director or the GM out of council for a day to go and sit at the EOC, it makes a huge difference to the organisation. But I might actually ask Ms. Richardson to elaborate on that.
No, no, no.
Thank you very much. All councils in New South Wales are required to provide local emergency management officers. And so this role that we employed and commenced with us in January of 2022 fulfilled our LEMO role. We were very fortunate in our recruitment to have obtained a very experienced individual in multiple tiers of emergency management. And so what that, as the mayor has indicated, allowed us to do was to have a dedicated experienced resource in the Emergency Operations Centre, working with our other staff, but allowed our other senior staff the capacity to undertake all the other operational challenges that we have in times of emergency around opening and closing roads, managing our sewer treatment plants, all of those sorts of challenges that if our other senior staff are sitting in the Emergency Operations Centre, we just don't have the, we don't have the legs on the ground to be able to manage.
And just to follow up on that briefly, does that person also assist council with developing plans in between a crisis, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. So council is in its final stages of preparing its resilience strategy and its resilience plans. And so that'll be a big piece of work for us over the next sort of six months, I think.
Thank you.
Penny Sherwood. And then Ms. Fuzak.
Thank you very much. I think this was one for you, Mr. Mayor. We toured the evacuation route from Pitt Town this afternoon, this morning. It was, it's a pretty rickety old road. Clearly it failed during these floods. I was very concerned that no one seems to know who has the key to even opening that road along the edge of the national park there. What work has council done on those, in identifying those evacuation routes? And what support, if any, are you getting from state government to do those immediately? It seems to me that some of this work is going to take a long time, but that just seems to be an urgent, easy thing that could be dealt with. Can you just take us through that?
Yeah, so I might not be fully across the details of the work required, but we've certainly gone and identified it's a priority. What needs to happen there in terms of fixing drainage issues, fixing road widths, road surfaces, lighting in some instances? We've looked at what that would cost. And whilst it's not in our current operational plans, we've requested the funding from the state government.
And are you eligible for that under the disaster recovery? It sort of falls outside that, doesn't it?
It's not from damage. It's just because it was identified during the emergency, unfortunately.
And how many evacuation routes like that do you have in the council area?
I wouldn't be able to answer that without.
Did you take it, maybe take it on notice for us?
Yeah.
Just, I think it's a really important issue, given also we obviously drove past places where there's a lot more development going in there. I saw, I think, Eden's Future or something, which currently is bush, but looks like it's going to be a new development. You also, in terms of population growth, are you able to tell us how many? Have you been able to match the population growth with actually the physical limitations on the evacuation routes?
Look, at the moment, we're essentially not able to do any further significant infill development east of the river on the basis of the SES's advice. They're not comfortable with evacuation routes. So at the moment, there will be no further, essentially.
And the SES has identified those routes as well. I'm aware. In a previous inquiry, we've had discussions about that.
That's right. There's been a few goes at this, yes.
Yeah, great. I've got just one more question, which is the issue about localisation and centralisation of the SES. It was a huge issue in the North Coast. In fact, I think to say that the Northern Rivers is upset about the loss of local knowledge would be an understatement. And you sort of, all of you have touched on that a little bit. What's your reflection on that? And how do you think that, is this a matter of the SES needing some more professional staff to support the volunteers? Is it working better with the volunteers? What is the answer to this? I mean, it's been heavily centralised to Wongong. And, you know, the North Coast were very unhappy about that. Keen to understand where you're at.
Sure. I guess I preface my answer with saying that I can identify the problems for you. I'm not a disaster management expert. I'm not going to have all the solutions. So it's just my opinions. But I think it probably is the empowerment of the local commander. In Hawkesbury, we're very lucky to have an outstanding local SES commander and outstanding SES unit. They know what they're doing. And there are occasions where I would be ringing the commander and saying, why isn't this area being looked at yet? And he would be saying to me, I've told them. I'm waiting. And potentially just empowering the local commanders to make decisions themselves. But I think also when it comes to evacuation orders, quite simply, literally, just let them have a look at it before you issue it. So you don't go and tell North By Park to evacuate, for example, when you mean South Windsor or whatever locally knows as South Windsor. Those sorts of things happened from time to time. And it just causes confusion in the community because it's not how we would refer to it.
Ms. Templeman or Ms. Preston?
I'd like to make a comment if I may. Just in relation to Kevin Jones is her SES commander there in Hawkesbury. Absolutely brilliant and the crew that he has are first class. And he was my go-to person throughout this ordeal. I talked to him about, sometimes there's comments about, we don't have an ambulance station or a police station over on that Northern, North Richmond side of the river. And even as early as two days ago, I spoke to Fire and Rescue and the other emergency groups. They said that they have a system in place when it looks like the flood is going to cut off the bridge and people won't be able to get either side. They deploy their machines and their people over to the other side. They've got the hospital there, the St John of God. There are ambulances that will be positioned over there and their teams. The same with Fire and Rescue. They have people that they will deploy over there. They actually live there as well and they have positions where they park their vehicles. They have a system in place there because they know the area so well. They're very familiar with the issues. So I don't know if it's been different to Northern Rivers, but I'm very confident and comfortable in the way the SES are managing the situation and the interaction they have with very good volunteers. I talked about Mountain of Joy, Hawkesbury Helping Hands. There's a team camaraderie amongst the emergency services platform and the volunteers that just get it happening. We're very fortunate in Hawkesbury to have that.
Thank you.
If I may pick up on some of those points, there is a highly respected SES team and Kevin Jones has a lot of local knowledge. Kevin Jones has a lot of local knowledge, and it did seem that that was absolutely being listened to. In terms of this issue of lack of services across the river, you asked about growing populations, that's where the population is growing. There are, I wouldn't have the figures, but the council may be able to provide them of the projected growth across the river, so west of the river. Now, in 2021, not only did the bridges close, but the roads all closed as well, so there was total isolation. And the SES was needing to take people across the river by boats, there was a massive flotilla happening, and people were taken out by helicopter to seek medical care when they needed it. We also had, that created the issue of a food shortage, and we needed to literally ferry food across to the supermarket, not charity food, but to get supplies across because this had not ever been contemplated. So the fragility of Bell's Line of Road, which remains fragile and has not appeared to have a lot of resilience building done on it, it's had repairs, but it doesn't appear to be more resilient, is a single point of failure in a flood when our other roads and bridges are closed. So I think there is a need for the state government to be looking at what services need to be, their medical, fire, and those, you know, what is the plan? There is no plan. The plan was you call the SES and you get a doctor, but if you need to, you get helicoptered out. There was also very poor communication about that for the community. So there's a lot of work to be done for the population on that side of the river to feel confident that in a flood where they don't expect to be flooded, but they know they could well be isolated. And the other issue I'd raised, just for the committee to be aware of, is the duplication of North Richmond Bridge, something that will be very key with Commonwealth money involved in it, to make sure that whatever the plan is for that bridge, I am certainly keen to see that there is some additional flood resilience in the bridge that is put in there. And we are all aware of the failure of that for the Windsor Bridge plan.
Thank you.
Very briefly.
Yeah, I'm very mindful of time, very briefly.
Yeah, very briefly. I just wanted to say that I think that was probably remiss of not to mention the same thing that Ms. Templeman just mentioned. When you're asked about evacuation routes, mine didn't go to Bell's Line of Road, but absolutely that needs to be a priority, that needs to be looked at, and similarly, the North Richmond Bridge is key to all of this.
Ms. Cusack, I'm mindful of time, but go ahead.
Thank you. I have a few, they're short questions, so I'm hoping there's some short answers. Thank you very much. Ms. Templeman, in relation to residents wanting temporary accommodation on their property base, big issue with the Northern Coast, and when it's not provided, people are living in inferior conditions like tents, and winter is coming, so there's a lot of anxiety about that. Resilience have taken a view that they don't want to put a temporary accommodation on land that has flooded. So I just want to ask you your comment on that. I know our MPs are wishing for more flexibility up there, but I wondered what your thoughts were.
Landowners in the Hawkesbury know their land. They care about their land, and they want to restore it as quickly as they can. They also want a sense of home for their families. And so an agency might decide that's not what they want, but provided measures have been taken to ensure that the contamination, any contamination is dealt with, I can't see any reason why it isn't a sensible thing to do. Because the last thing we want is houses that are empty, land that's abandoned, and people having to travel very long distances to care for their home.
Thank you. Can I ask council, how many homes were flooded?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, I believe, I almost got that.
We've got 627 damaged and eight destroyed.
Thank you. Do you have a costing on the repair of Cornwallis Road?
We do have indicative costings on the stage one, and it's around the $10 million mark.
And what does stage one get us?
So stage one gets this immediate protection, so that's not actually the road itself, that's just the riverbank being restored so that the land doesn't become inundated in a minor rise in the river.
Do you know the cost of restoring the road?
We haven't actually designed stage two, that's why we split it into two stages, so we can, we recognise the urgency of the situation. Well, the first focus is to immediately restore protection from the river, and then the second stage will be design the best road and drain.
The suggestion is it's beyond the capacity of council, I can see that financial capacity. What about engineering capacity?
It is, it is beyond our engineering capacity.
Thank you. Are you looking, now you have a $1.6 million storm levy, is that correct?
One point, stormwater levy.
Is there a stormwater levy on right payers?
Yes.
How much is that?
I think that's $25 for the property.
So what does that yield?
I'm sorry, yeah. That would be $25,000, $25, something like that. I don't have that in front of me, sorry, I can take out a notice.
Right, but it's definitely not sufficient to do the work that's...
No, financially, this will be covered by the DR, the FRA.
Just one final question. Sydney Water operates Borragamba Dam. Given that the drainage system here is so impacted dealing with the outcomes of the management of Borragamba Dam, shouldn't Sydney Water be managing the drainage system here?
There's multiple drainage systems, I'm on different, some are privately owned, some are owned by the state agencies that manage the infrastructure associated with them. But yes, I think what was being said, what you're indicating, a coordinated approach to that would be far better.
This seems a hopeless situation to me, that there are just not the resources there for it to be dealt with at a council level. I can't see any alternative other than to, and given that the dam is being managed for the whole of the Sydney population, it would seem reasonable to me. The consequences of that management on Hawkesbury should be shared by all back ends.
Look, I mean, certainly have no problem with that at all. Obviously, we're now planning forward to what our current situation is, though, and that's for us to deal with that and take the coordination role, but certainly we wouldn't be opposed to Sydney Water taking it.
We're over time. Okay. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I noticed that you took one question on notice from Ms. Cusack. Can you also provide to us on notice the cost of damage to the roads in the most recent flood?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your statements and your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Dai, can I get you to state your full name, your position title, and whether you'll take an oath or affirmation, and then provide that?
Yes, my name's Angela Dai, I'm the President of the Hawkesbury City Chamber of Commerce, and I'm going to use the Bible.
That's an oath.
An oath.
So read the, there should be a statement there for you to read.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzpatrick, your name, your full name, your position title, and an oath or affirmation.
My name is Graham Fitzpatrick, I'm a Business Connect advisor with the Western City Business Centre, and I'll be taking the affirmation.
Thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now I'm about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, sir. Now, Ms. Dai and/or Mr. Fitzpatrick, there is a provision for a short opening statement if you wish to do so.
Yes, I'd like to, on behalf of the chamber. Firstly, for those who don't know, the Hawkesbury City Chamber of Commerce is a not-for-profit, and everyone who is associated with that is a volunteer. So I'd like to say that in my discussions with business community and community groups and general public, basically, the opinion is that you cannot fix and access anything from afar. So, you know, I believe each area needs their own team, the Hawkesbury needs, and would benefit from a locally-based process to help with the recovery and funding, working with local government, other service providers, community groups. Locally-based means they know the lay of the land, so they've been here a long time, they know how it works in the Hawkesbury, and they're used to what happens. And they also are quite informed regarding the people, the businesses, and the locations around the Hawkesbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzpatrick, would you like to do a statement?
Yes, yes, I would. So the role of the Western City Business Centre and Business Connect, not just for this process, but from others like the bushfires and the recent Covid disruption, was to actually provide free business advice on the level of, in this case, getting businesses back and started again, so getting back to business. So it was through business planning, looking at costings, marketing, pivoting in new directions, and that was kind of the role that, our job. And we've done that quite successfully off the back of the bushfires. The amount of work that we did around Billpin with a lot of the fruit growers out that way during the bushfires, and even last year during the flood process, I worked with a local cattle farmer just down the back of Windsor here who lost all her feed. In fact, if you drove around last year, you would have seen bales of her feed pretty much all over the region. So I helped her actually get your feed stock and that sort of stuff. So that was the role that we've played up until now. This year, we found that we were kind of left out of the process a little bit. You know, the referrals that we would normally get from Resilience and Services New South Wales just seemed to dry up this time round, and we're getting more referrals from business accountants and that sort of stuff than what we were through the whole programme. We found this time round that the flood recovery centres were seen to be overstaffed in many cases. There was more agencies there on a couple of occasions that I toured than there was actual people needing help, to the point where some of the service providers, like myself, I couldn't actually get a seat or a table to be there for a certain period of time to actually be able to help people. We thought that this time round, instead of four or five centres like last time, there was only really two centres this time, which we thought alienated a lot of businesses from other areas that couldn't get to those locations. Maybe a couple of vans might be a better opportunity, a better idea next time, that can actually go out there to Pitt Town and those sort of areas, rather than relying on people. Because a lot of these businesses were still mopping up, but then would have to travel to a recovery centre to talk to someone. And overall, and the biggest thing for me this time round was the whole grant process, the eligibility criteria, you know, the $75,000. Again, micro businesses have been left out again, and they were not just left out from the bushfires, they were left out during Covid for a lot of funding opportunities, and they've been left out again this time for this current flood process. But just the actual eligibility process, and then the lack of, I guess, I don't know whether it was knowledge or training that a lot of the business concierge had in that eligibility process was lacking too. Because the amount of clients that were getting different stories each time they spoke to a different person was quite thin, to the point where we actually became a counselling service rather than an assistance service to those businesses that were struggling through that application process.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. I'd actually like to take up one of the items you mentioned in your opening statement. You talked about Resilience New South Wales, you know, being overstaffed but not providing referrals to you. Because on the North Coast, there was criticism that they were eight to five, nine to five. So did you investigate why they didn't give you referrals?
Look, I don't know. And John Todd, who's our executive officer, Johnny apologises today, he's quite ill at the moment, so John may have been a bit more better to answer that, because I'm just one of the foot soldiers, I guess, in terms of the cog in the wheel, rather than being within that management level. But our understanding is, our role was to just go out there and just assist with that business, general business advice. Everything else was to be referred to through Services New South Wales. So we couldn't, we were, and my understanding of it was, we were given a directive not even to get involved in discussions around grant, what available eligibility and that sort of stuff. It was just literally, if you need a grant, go and talk to Services New South Wales.
Now, can you take me to the grants process? There was some criticism, there's been lots of criticism on the North Coast.
I do have a five or six-page email from a client that I received this morning who was aware that this was happening today.
Are you able to provide that to us?
I'm happy to provide it to, and it goes through in depth the dramas that she had, you know, four or five different applications.
If you don't mind picking out a couple of, what you think are very important, and then tabling the document.
And this is in light of the fact that my area is Blacktown, Blue Mountains, Pendletham, Hawkesbury, which is I look after. So this client was actually on the fringe of the Hawkesbury, so on the border of Hawkesbury and Blacktown. So initially, Blacktown was left out of all the flood recovery assistance scheme, she actually had to lobby Services New South Wales and Prue Cart MP to get Blacktown included in a lot of the grant recovery to begin with. Her initial application was overturned for the $15,000, and they wouldn't disclose the reason as to why that happened.
Okay, so what happened?
So second time around, she applied based on the fact that there was a code within her ASEX registration that wasn't correct, so her accountant, money again, she had to pay to her accountant to get that fixed. She finally got the first $15,000 through, she was then told that she could apply for another $15,000 in further funding. The problem with that was is she actually had to give receipts for what that $15,000 was spent on, she didn't have the money to begin with. What she had to do is, the $20,000 home, she actually had, she got that grant, and was actually using that money to buy $15,000 worth of stuff to prove receipts. But then every time she spoke to someone at Services New South Wales, it was either waiting, on hold, or, you know, it was a different, it was different advice. And that's just one business.
What was her business?
So she actually is a thoroughbred horse spelling yard, and she actually grows feed for those, and she provides feed. So the other thing is, there was arguments a lot of the time, is whether she was a primary producer, whether she was a small business, or whether she was a horse adjustment business, which didn't qualify for any funding at all.
So do you find this typical of the grants process?
In this case, I think it was. Also, my cattle farmer that I mentioned earlier before, I rang her straight after the flood water started, so decided she was right in what funding assistance I could give her. Her words were basically, I'm still waiting on my funding from RAA last year, what is the point of doing it this year?
Thank you. Catherine Cusack?
Just so that horse adjustment doesn't qualify as primary...
One of the things, and it's in here, and I can't, I'll have to go through, yeah, one of the ones is because she was dealing with horses, she wasn't eligible and considered as a small business, and she didn't fit with the primary producer aspects of the rural funding. And that's the thing, there's a number of businesses that have fallen through the gaps with these various eligibility criteria.
So gisting livestock doesn't qualify as primary production?
That was my understanding in her circumstances, yes.
Wow. And the definitions of what is a primary producer, as I understand it, is based on an ATO definition? Do you have any comment about that?
My thing with that, I think, I understand that the $75,000 criteria was based on the GST, where GST kicks in, but it left a lot of businesses out who were under, or nowhere near that, but were still majorly impacted on their businesses. And that doesn't even take into account some of the indirect aspects of it as well. You know, there was an Asheville company who basically, the ground is so wet, he can't do any work, and hasn't been able to do any work in the last six months. You know, so it's not a lot of the time, it's just that. A cafe over the other side of the river from Wiseman's Ferry, you know, because the river was carved, that's her trade. Now, none of the grants were around decreases in trade, it was all about damage to property and things that were lost.
And earlier, Robin Preston made a suggestion in relation to businesses and people who can't get insurance for funding, potentially a new product that just looked at a $50,000 cover, just to assist with the dealing with the flood rather than the actual building itself. Have you thought about that idea?
No, I must admit, my other, insurance is another one.
Just on the basis that that might be obtainable insurance?
But again, we were, a lot of the time, you know, when we started to talk to, part of our role was to talk about costs and business resilience and that sort of stuff. But because there was no referrals in the whole process, we weren't in the position to be able to even have those conversations. Last year, we actually spoke to Services New South Wales on a number of times about actually giving us a list of businesses that were coming through the flood recovery centres that we could go and follow up, and my understanding was we never got that list. So, and this time, we didn't even go down that road because we were just told that our function was to go and assist, and that everything was going through Services New South Wales.
So what's changed between the two floods?
I don't know. And I said, and again, I'm not in, being just one of the foot soldiers, as an advisor, I don't know those higher conversations, but in my understanding, I don't know, it's just that we just found that, you know, we became councillors to a lot of the time. And that's the thing, I guess, as an advisor, we found this through Covid too. We had, we were sitting at home to a certain degree, and could have actually been utilised a lot better in terms of going out there and helping businesses with their grant applications instead of not being told that it all had to go through Services New South Wales.
Okay, well, do you think that there's a particularly vulnerable cohort in relation to claiming, making claims?
I just think that the whole claim process is just difficult, and in terms, even in terms of the way it's done, like, there's businesses out there and business people that aren't that tech savvy, that don't know the difference between a PDF and an upload and that sort of stuff too. And it just seems that the concierges were, this is the process, and if you couldn't fit to that process, sorry, we can't help you.
Thank you. Ms. Dai, in your opening statement, you referred to that you wanted a locally-based response. Can you explore that and explain to me?
Yes.
What were the deficiencies that made you make that recommendation?
Only from the feedback of the businesses that we've spoken to and the general community that we've spoken to, they seem to say, comments along the lines of, everyone that comes to help us doesn't live in this area, and they don't understand the way this area actually works, and the way that the floods and the fires and all the different disasters affect the Hawkesbury. It's very, it's very individual, as it is with other areas around New South Wales that it's happened to. So having a locally-based group who have that knowledge, made up of our people who are being in the services that are required, that way they would have someone basically on their side that understands Cornwallis Road. on their side that understands Cornwallis, for example, you know? No one understands the damage that's done there unless you live in the Hawkesbury and you've seen it how it was before, and then you get, you get the opportunity to come here, the majority of people elsewhere don't.
Are you familiar with Cornwallis Road?
Yeah, I've been in the Hawkesbury since 77, so.
So, and you've seen that in the last, what is it, this deterioration has occurred in the last two years?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it's dreadful, you know, and, and nothing seems to make it better, nothing fixes it. The Hawkesbury will always flood, always, regardless of the height of the dam, regardless of anything else, it will always flood. That's what the Hawkesbury is. So, however, we need to have people in place as well as processes in place that are going to make it better so that people in the area are not affected to the extent that they currently are.
And you, you would accept that because that road is in such a state, well, I'm sorry, it doesn't exist?
That's right.
That, that in fact, that adds a significant extra cost to doing business activity in that area?
Yes, correct.
And also that there, there is the state of the roads in the, in the council area too, that increases the cost of doing business in the community?
It does, it increases the cost of doing business. It stops people from using those roads who would get to those particular businesses, you know, and, and as well as what Graham's been saying, you know, we've, here I've got, you know, from the, the Rural Financial Counselling Service that has set up a shop now in, in the Hawkesbury to help the farmers and all that, similar things that the, the previous panel, along with what Graham's been saying, is, is what's on here regarding, you know, although the farmers know that they live on the floodplains, you know, they still have to look at Cornwallis and look at the drainage and look at this because they just can't work, they just can't have their businesses functioning.
And what's the document that you're referring to?
This is just an email that was sent to me when I spoke to the Rural Financial Counselling Service.
And what did they say?
Because they deal with financially counselling, people with grants and everything that are on, you know, primary producers and they're on the land. So, would you like me to read it?
Yeah, sure.
So it says, many of the farmers accept that flood is a real possibility, given that many farms, the rich soils of the floodplains along the river. They don't want to accept that as a solution that takes time, they want to be immediate work to commence and help minimise the impact for the next time. So a lot of them are about, yeah, this has happened, we have to get through it, but it's going to happen again, so we need to make sure it's not as bad. The drainage pipes along Cornwallis Road are a perfect example. It's taken the council almost 12 months to repair them after the last flood, and now they have a much bigger problem to deal with after years and years of floods and things not being fixed. There is going to be temporary, you know, they'll put in a temporary solution, this is what they're telling us, you know, it's going to be a temporary solution again, which is going to make it even longer term before things get fixed.
I know the, the mayor referred to as stage one and stage two, and stage one was just a stabilisation.
Yes, yes. So they seem to have, you know, the way that they're looking at it is, it's always just a stabilisation, it's never fix it, it's never finished the fixing. The control of water flow in the P in Hawkesbury is massive. Raising the dam wall, they've got a question mark there. Penrith Lakes was supposed to be a mitigation system, boring holes and sandstone walls of the Hawkesbury downstream for Sackville and Portland to help avoid the bottleneck situation that creates much of a flood devastation. Lack of communication with the farmers, you know, farmers have got, you know, farmers are a breed of their own, you know, they're very, very proud people and they don't want to accept help, they feel that, they live on the land and they, they should be able to deal with it. So what they've listed here is, you know, some don't want help, I'm a farmer, it's just part of farming, that's their attitude. You know, some believe they won't get help, so they just, you know, they self-assess. So, yeah, we won't get the help anyway, we never do, we apply for the reason of ticking a box or not ticking a box or having, you know, GST or not having, whatever, they just get, they get passed over. You know, the primary producer grants of 75 to repair and recover, you know, they need assistance with those. Again, as has been mentioned before, they don't, they don't use the technical stuff that a lot of people use. They, they can't, you know, they get on there and they don't know where to go and they don't know what button to push, it goes the wrong way, they just shut it down again. You know, they're constantly facing, you know, barriers.
Thank you. Now, Mr Fitzpatrick, you nodded during the Cornwallis matter.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm no expert on, in terms of the riverbank and all the rest of it, but I must, I was involved in, last year, there was a couple of business forums that were held at the sports club at Pitttown for businesses to come and meet the various departments and agencies and that sort of stuff. And the two nights that I was there, the main consensus from the business owners, especially from the primary producer asset, was people coming in there and talking about the riverbanks and that sort of stuff. So there was a massive concern for that, you know, and, and in fact, I was actually a bit flabbergasted, so, because a couple of times there, I was sitting there going, does anybody want to actually talk about getting their business back on track? But the emphasis was on that riverbank, and I can't, and I think that's part of the problem is, the river, what's happened on the river is primarily at people's top of mind and everything else just seems to be secondary. And, and how do you actually assist businesses when that infrastructure of the roads, the drainage and that sort of stuff are, are so, so impacted?
Thank you. Scott, you had a question?
Just a quick one possibly for you, Ms Dyke. Donations, can you talk, from a Chamber of Commerce perspective, donations that get sent into the area from Sydney, say, versus when cash is donated to people to spend money in that area? I know throughout drought, for instance, drought support, it was a big deal to have the money spent in the town. From a Chamber of Commerce perspective, have you got a comment on that?
Look, I, I believe the community groups that are in the, in the Hawkesbury are, you know, well versed on looking after those things, and they really do live up to the task. All of our people who are volunteers, they're, they're really, I don't believe there's anything better anywhere else. So they, they, they accommodate those very well. When donations come in, they already know where it's going, they've already earmarked it because they've got their list of people, they've got their team out there talking to the community. The Hawkesbury City Chamber of Commerce actually has a welfare officer as part of a committee. And, you know, Rob has been so active in the community, making sure that as things are happening like that, that we already know where it's going to go, we know where it's needed. So, you know, that's, that's what's been happening.
But from a business perspective, would you rather see that, that the donations get made in cash spent in the local area or goods sent out from, from?
I would rather myself see, and I haven't asked anyone else about this obviously, because, but I would rather see it come in in cash. And again, we use our local, hopefully locally put together processes along with all the other bodies in the area to make the money do the best it can do. Someone needs a wardrobe, that's fine, someone needs, you know, clothing, that's fine. They're always there because the Hawkesbury is such a generous community, it gives, it just gives and gives and gives and gives. So they are always there. So taking some of that away and making some of it cash would, I believe, benefit the whole community business and otherwise better.
Thank you. Thank you. Keith?
Thank you, Chair. And just wanting to, if you could both comment on the general level of confidence of businesses in the area to continue investing in their businesses at the moment. What, what's the feeling like?
Well, because we've been hit so many times so quickly, and if you include in there the COVID situation as well, the first trench came in and certain businesses, they just fell, you know, for whatever those reasons were, they fell. But a whole lot of them got back up again and they went, okay, brush yourself off, this is business, this is what happens. So off they went again, and then it hit again, along with floods and along with bushfires. So you have had a number of the business community in smaller businesses, one man band, those type of ones, cafes at the side of the road, you know, different entertainment function areas, all those sort of things, just throw their hands up and go, you know, we just can't pick ourselves up again. We just need to either be supported better or give a, have the recovery work faster because sometimes it's the timeframe that does it. The timeframe and the constant, I've got to answer some more questions, I've got to fill another form, I have to do this again, I have to do this again, it's a different person on the phone. I don't have a case manager, so I'm telling my whole story again, and they're reliving everything that's already happened over and over again. And then they just go, you know what, I just can't do this anymore, I just don't have the energy to get up. Businesses in the Hawkesbury are also supporting businesses in the Hawkesbury to do that, to be able to take another step and get up. So that's how I've seen it anyway from the Chamber.
Mr Fitzpatrick, do you have any?
I, I'm lucky to actually work across a number of different council areas, or three council areas where they very much, the business community, look after the business communities. And it's a credit to, to the Chamber and the way the Chamber facilitates that, where they assist each other. So that's been the main thing. I think the, the biggest thing is, 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 is there's a, there's a huge level of frustration right through. And, and it's, you know, and, and one of the ones, and I didn't actually mention it before, you know, there was $1,000 that anybody in a flooded affected area could access, okay? I know in areas like the Blacktown LGA, people that were living in a block of flats in Ruddy Hill got $1,000, and these businesses that are struggling and dying in some cases in the Hawkesbury here that can't get $15,000 to replace a piece of equipment, that's the frustration. So it's not, so their, and their confidence is affected off that back of that, that frustration. And as an advisor, I can only sit there and advise them on, on so much in terms of those, that frustration, that lack of confidence. I will say, but I, one of the things that I do have to, and it, and it has blown me away, is the resilience of business in Western Sydney. They have been knocked around so much over the last three years, and many of them who pivoted in new directions has been absolutely amazing, it's been a privilege to work with a lot of those businesses. However, a lot of those smaller businesses, as Angela said, especially those smaller businesses, yeah, are throwing their hands up or have shut down, and that's why we've seen an increase in startups over the last two or three years, because the place that they've worked for before has either made them redundant or they've closed down, and now they're looking at setting up their own business just purely to have a source of income.
Can I just add something as well? We've got the other side of it as well, we've got a lot of, a lot of new business has risen out of the ashes. You know, a lot of people have been very innovative and twisted their businesses around and changed tact and gone in different directions, you know, and they've done that with support of, you know, the organisations within the Hawkesbury and other business owners saying, why don't you look at this? And, you know, so it's, it's been, it's been really, really great to see that the businesses who have been around for a long time have been able to help the businesses who are struggling by giving them ideas, business ideas of how they could twist their business and put it in another direction so that it can start to earn them income again. I mean, these are business owners, business owners have a mindset that this is what they want to be, they want to be business owners. So for, to see all that happening within the Chamber locally has just been really, really amazing.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question about the massive gaping hole at Cornwallis that we saw today. Is there a sense from anyone on the ground that it's actually too big to fix? Like, you know, you'd have to be realistic with flood after flood after flood and what is happening with the riverbank, that it's just too massive to fix?
I, I saw, I was taken down by a turf farmer last year, originally to see, because they back onto that. And I was staggered with it then. A cattle farmer that I was also assisting backs onto that, and it was a point where she couldn't use that back end of her paddock for her cattle and that sort of stuff, and that was last year. Now, I just, it's beyond, again, you said earlier, you just can't fathom the scale of it, exactly right. Yeah, yeah, and, 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 you know, and we know that there's more weather on the way, what, what happens next?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I have the same opinion, it is, you look at it and you just go, gosh, if I hadn't have seen that, I wouldn't believe it, you know?
I've actually tried to describe it to people in other areas and that sort of stuff, and I just can't because the scale of it is just.
You, you actually feel like you're making it up, you know, you feel like you're really exaggerating how big it is.
When you walk, when you walk down the bitumen, as you're walking slowly towards it, you think, and you, and you confront a cliff in the middle of a road.
So can I get a sense as well, just one last question on this, Public Works, what have they said to you in terms of, or what have they said to the local community about what's needed to fix it? Because everybody's saying that Public Works is across it, they're aware of it, but they're delaying. I mean, I would be surprised if Public Works knows what to do with that massive grand canyon out there in Hawkesbury.
I think part of, part of the problem is that no one seems to want to go, I want to take ownership of this. No one seems to want to say, you know, well, it's going to take these five organisations to fix it, so guess what, we've all got to work together. You know, it either belongs to someone or it doesn't belong to someone or it's responsible, you know, the responsibility is this, this one or this one, but they just keep chopping and changing. So depending on who it is you talk to will depend on who it is get blamed, you know, for the lack of it, or can it be done or should it be done? I mean, there's even that question, should it actually be done or should it not be done?
And somebody suggested today, one of the farmers we met, that we could, in terms of construction workers, why don't we get some of the construction workers that are doing the Western Sydney Airport and put that on hold and get all of those people out to that and just try and restore the roads? What do you think about that kind of thing?
Well, you know.
Because where are they, where are the construction workers?
Yeah, they're all at the, at the airport, aren't they? So, you know, because again, it comes into what's more important to the general, you know, and that little part of the Hawkesbury is important to the Hawkesbury.
Sue, do you have a question? Okay. Witnesses, Ms Dyke, Mr Fitzpatrick, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, due to the number of people who have signed up for the public forum, we've decided to cut the break short and will resume at 3:45, which is 15 minutes earlier. Paul and Charlie Saliba, please approach. Yep, sit down, gentlemen. I have to do a short little introduction before we begin. Today, welcome to today's public, welcome to today's public forum for the Select Committee on the Response to Major Flooding Across New South Wales in 2022. This session is an opportunity to hear directly from people who have been impacted by the floods in Western Sydney. Public forums are a relatively new innovation to the New South Wales Parliament, so please bear with us. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief statements about today's procedures for today's public forum. Speakers were asked to register in advance for today's forum. Those of you who have registered to speak will be called upon in turn. You have approximately five minutes to speak to the committee. We will sound a warning bell at three and a half minutes, so you'll be aware that you need to wrap up and conclude your remarks. I stress that it is important to keep to time as best as possible so that we can have as many people address the parliament and share their stories. What you say today is being transcribed and streamed live to the Parliament's website and will be included as evidence to the inquiry. It is also important that I note again that while all participants are covered by parliamentary privilege, committee hearings and public forums are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of privilege. In that regard, it is important that participants focus on issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. Finally, can I sincerely, can I sincerely thank those who've come today to share their story? It's important that the committee hears the personal stories of those affected by the floods. It will help shape our report and formulate what we hope will be important recommendations to the paritate government. Welcome, and gentlemen, would you please state your name, starting with you?
Paul Saliba.
Charlie Saliba.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have five minutes to make a statement to the committee. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to let everybody know that the washout that we got, like, this has been done on, on our farms, sort of, this project has been done the last three years, years, and we haven't had much of a result out of it yet. We keep getting promised that something's going to be done, something's going to be done in another two, three weeks, and it's been going on for three years, years, and the damage that we, we got in our, in our farm, we got a foot, two foot of silk, silk in there, like, and I would have mine, any of yous there would like to come down and have a look for yourselves, because when you see a photo of that, it doesn't look the same, same. And like my businesses, you know, we lost 90% of our business, had to put blagues off, off, and like, we, we can't carry on with our business until that bank's fixed because, you know, we can spend a million dollars to get our farm back and go, going again, and, you know, what, three days' rain, we, we can lose everything again. And every time we talk to a councilperson or somebody, somebody, they say, yes, or, And every time we talk to a councilperson or somebody, somebody, they say, yes, or they can't make a decision because they say, oh, that person's not here today, they make a decision for us, you know, what's going to go, and what conversation can we get? You know, a council refuses us every time we say something, take us to the court, court, and that's our answer we get back from them. So we're getting bad results all, all around the circle. It just keeps passing the bat from one person to another person. You might as well be in the circus because that's the way it sort of looks like to me it runs, like. And I'd like, I'd like you to see us all come down there and have a look what actually damage it does to our properties. Now, because look from afar, that doesn't do any good, you know? Thank you.
Uh, Paul, Paul Saliba, would you like to make a comment or a statement?
Yeah, just want to basically say, like, um, Parliament and, like, all the government basically need to change their policy on Warragamba Dam. Um, yeah, but basically, we, we, we need them to be able to release water for two or three weeks prior to them needing to do it for a flood. Once they release that, that water, the way that they run it at the moment, the volume just wrecks the banks and causes the jump in spots. It's, um, yeah, it's, it's just wrecking the whole district. Um, yeah, like, the veggie farmers, equestrian, turf, the cows, but, yeah, basically, if they're able to manage it a bit better by, like, they've got the sensors in the river that they can adjust the water, like, so it's a manageable height, obviously not at the moment in the, in the sense that it's, there's an open hole, but generally, they'd be able to manage the water so that way it doesn't affect the farmers or the residents or anyone um that in their house. If they're, they're allowed to release the water, they'll, um, yeah, you understand what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and also, we've been told, I've read that if they do build the wall, that they're gonna, basically, that water, they're gonna release it at the same time, which is gonna keep us under for longer, which is just gonna wreck everything again if they, if they keep the water.
Would you like to say anything about Cornwallis Road?
Yeah, like, it's, the road's non-existent. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That concludes your remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next witness is Mrs. Rochelle Miller. You have five minutes.
I'm a resident of Greens Road, Lower Portland, on the Hawkesbury River. I will try my best to, extensive issues in limited time. Our road was swept away in March twenty-one flood. Repairs had not begun before the March twenty-two flood, causing further damage. We have limited access. We are heavily financially impacted with the delay of access to our property. One end of Greens Road impassable from flood damage, and the other has tight hairpin bends not suitable for trailers or trucks. My community will be without water haulage delivery for two years due to heavy vehicle restrictions from road damage. IFS trucks will not have full access to my home or my neighbors. Emergency response is delayed by approximately forty-five minutes. The seventeen kilometer flood detour is not a road, it's a bushfire trail, Willbara Ridge Trail. Allocated repairs to Greens Road did not begin until after the twenty-two flood event. We are very aware we live rurally, but I have encountered dealing with disaster relief as a lack of problem solving in a lot of process. When we cannot adapt the way we legislate and support disaster, you expose constituents to prolonged suffering. It would take time to repair the road properly. It is the handling of the process prior to workmen on site that is inexcusable. We have no other road while ours is in the river. The estimated repair time could have been drastically reduced if dealt with as a response to a flood disaster. Government levels have continually told us they cannot make our detour a roadworthy access. We are told national parks and wildlife govern the detour zone. Grading cannot occur, the trail continually washed out, potholed. The majority of one-lane sections has limited vision. After the Gospers fire that threatened the same trail we are driving, as is a flood detour, bushfire trails across the state were surveyed by government to make access better. All levels of government will not maintain Willbara Ridge Trail for residents' safety on detour for two years after a flood event, just too bad, but two fire trucks can't even pass on the same section for the next fire event. You all have the power, as the game changes, to make rural communities less isolated from the services we are entitled to as citizens. If you cannot offer a guarantee to our safety on a road engineered to today's standards for road requirements, come up with other options. It is part of flood relief. I am also snubbed in crying why we cannot utilize the river as a transit option while our road is being repaired. It would keep our families and elderly off the trail, reduce travel times, open tourism venues, and relieve, and relieve the personal cost during this prolonged period of time created by government, not a flood. Funding is denied by Resilience New South Wales for a water taxi. It does not fall in a certain category. Because there is not enough children, not enough people in an isolated community, they might not have a human, there might not be a huge amount of us, but surely flood recovery and relief includes all that are flood-affected. My daughter, eight, at the time of the twenty-one flood, developed anxiety, sorry. Sorry.
It's okay.
She developed anxiety throwing up, traveling the bushfire tourer on the trail on the side of the road. She's a tough kid. She's never had this passingness. And all the government levels have visited the site and spoke of doing everything we can and putting our requests in for geotags and tick-tock, 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 still my children enduring the mental exhaustion of the detour and lengthy travel times to school. I am exhausted dealing with red tape. Flood disaster response should include planning that reduces these prolonged repair times. All I have heard from government authorities are the reasons why they cannot work with policyholders. So many whys followed with answers of not our area, not our job. My question is, whose job is it? Stop talking in circles. Government should be, have procurements on tentative contracts to respond to rebuilding infrastructure such as roads. We are here waiting months for decisions to be made by state government, SES, Resilience New South Wales, who have the flood mapping for years. You all know what roads in the floodplain are going under in minor to major flood levels. You have them to evacuate people, to save lives. You know where that infrastructure is. Why does it matter if it's a council road or a state road? Don't all Hawkesbury drivers deserve safe, roadworthy roads after a flood? Why is the funding not coming from one area of control after a flood disaster? The Telstra towers were out during the most dangerous of floodwaters. The power was off in Lower Portland for over a week. The most crucial of times to communicate, we had no reliable communication. Our satellites only cover so much without power. Yes, we invest in generated power and fuel individually planned. Where is the planning from large corporation and government to back up communication? It is a life and death necessity. People with no reception, needing life-saving medication, were uncontactable by community, inaccessible when valleys flooded with stormwater and river created their own islands. Diabetics could not obtain insulin, caught out as floodwaters that usually last a matter of days took a week to disappear. Isolated with no phone service, SES headquarters were amazing, but medical supplies could not be collected or supplied the same way. If Telstra cannot supply communication coverage, isolated communities need satellite phones to coordinate relief. Much like defibrillator projects for response, these areas that cannot reach each other should be provided with the communication. Claim processing can also be improved for those who legitimately deserve the service they undertook. I refer to the Northern Rivers now. My parents lived not far from Woodburn at the time of the twenty-two flood needing medical assistance three times a week. Local Evans Head chemist Trevor Coombs was flooded out of access to his chemist when the rain bob hit the Northern Rivers. With parts of the Pacific Highway flooded with water, Trevor took the initiative to hire a private helicopter to return to Evans Head in the, in the morning of the second or the third twenty-two, knowing his life-saving medical scripts had to be filled for the isolated. He issued approximately seven hundred and fifty scripts that day to community that had been flooded out of Broadwater, Woodburn, and other areas. Seven hundred and fifty medications that saved lives. A claim for the expense of the helicopter that saw him attend to his crucial role in community was directed to Resilience New South Wales, directly lodged on Trevor's behalf by local federal member Kevin Hogan. Today, despite the federal office follow-up, the claim has not been processed. Why does access to water transit for flood-affected and life-saving medical supply not fall under the resilience support in New South Wales? Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
The, the next person is, is Peter Ryan, and he'll be followed by Ian Burns. Are you Mr. Ryan? Oh, yes. I recognize you, Mr. Ryan. Please, please address the committee.
Thank you very much. I represent the Pitttown Progress Association. It's been, um, working at Pitttown since about eighteen ninety-one, so, and we're present, we have three hundred members. Our main role is to advocate for the people of Pitttown to all levels of government. We're non-political, and we work for our people, and that's our only task to get the best results from government. Now, Pitttown, you traveled through it today, but it quickly becomes isolated by the, by flooding, and to a degree where we don't, if we need supplies from Windsor, we've got to go a long way around. And that becomes very irritating because people are away from their homes, they're away from their families, and that is a real impost on the people. We need at Pitttown, someone on the ground, a face, a person to take responsibility, someone who the people can work with. A couple of us did that artificially, and, and we showed leadership, and people would have come to us and say, we need sandbags, or we need this, or we need that, but we really need someone, and we need a hub, a community hub out there. With these things, Kendy kept there all the time, like, sandbags, people needed sandbags, they had to come to Windsor. They're not going to take an hour to do that. So they did get some transported out there, and it wasn't enough. We need the facilities there where the people can go and do it themselves, but we need a face there. We need an SES or someone who is an authority to do it so that people can walk up and say, what will happen? Um, what is the flood doing so that they can actually see it face-to-face? We've lost power, we've lost internet, uh, phone services, believe it or not, our phone, mobile phone service is not good out there at the best of times. Um, for some reason, the tower faces the wrong way, even though we can stand there and look at it, we cannot make a phone call. Um, and, and that's something that we need to know, that the communications are set up for us. So if we have a community hub, we can supply the sandbags, people can go in and get food from the helping hand and all that, because people out there won't actually put their hand up and say, we're not doing real well, but if there's a place for them to go to and it is available, they will take up the opportunity to take it up. Now, probably the single biggest item in Pitttown when it comes to flooding, and we took you along today, is the flood evacuation route. I prepared a video of it when it was at its worst. Um, I wasn't able to show you today, and I hope that it will be distributed with you people. We need someone to take responsibility to deliver it, because today, we are one day closer to the next big flood, and to have it mishmashed around is not good enough. We need a road that's two lanes all the way, that's well-drained, well-marked, and well-maintained. Get rid of the truce, make it so it actually will support the people when they are at their worst. I've been through twenty floods in my lifetime. This last one was, now we have an extra three thousand people, I have never seen the look on people's faces of horror. They were trying to go to school to pick up their children. The floodwater had cut the roads, they didn't know what to do. There was cars breaking down in the water because we couldn't get the flood of our emergency section open. We finally did get it open thanks to the chap from the Rural Fire Service, but that is a single-lane road. Then we had to have the large trucks coming through there, broke the road up, and we're in a mess. So please, think about these things, it's safety. We haven't lost a life yet. Please, let's not go down that track and lose a life just because we haven't supplied the proper infrastructure. I thank you very much for listening to me and putting up with me on the bus towards more.
And, um, Mr. Ryan, if, Mr. Ryan, if you'd like to provide that video to the secretary at work?
I will do that. Right now.
Thank you. The, um, the next person is Mr. Ian Burns, followed by David Tolson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity of me being able to come here and bore you with my story. I'm, I'm in a very, very lucky situation where I own and operate a tourist icon for Windsor. I bought the Hawkesbury paddle wheeler. We've been, if you think of the Murray River and the Emi Lu and things like that, that's what we've got on the Hawkesbury. Uh, it was originally in Lane Cave National Park, and in two thousand, we bought it up to Windsor. The last three to four years have been an absolute nightmare for every business, whether you're on the river, close to the river, or in an area where we enjoy the river when it is normal. I'm, I'm lucky, I've got an amazing lifestyle when, when the weather is fantastic, but come the times of floods, it's absolutely terrifying. My, my business is on the river. I'm not a building or something that can go underwater, I get washed away. Um, in the last three years, we've had three major floods that have absolutely decimated my business. Um, the first one, we nearly lost our lives trying to rescue the boat to get off its mooring at Windsor near the bridge. Um, there's videos of that everywhere. Um, we ended up being washed down to Groenau Point with no assistance from any emergency services or anything like that. Um, we were tied up on the side of the river at Groenau Farm and trying, trying to sort of stay alive as long as we could before we did get rescued. Um, the first night we were there, tied up to the side of the river, the people came onto the boat and vandalized it and caused thousands of dollars worth of damage. Um, from, from that flood in twenty twenty, we could not return to Windsor because the, the infrastructure and the facility and the wharves and everything were down near Pickwater somewhere. Um, we ended up down at Lower Portland, um, and in March twenty-one, we received another flood, which ended up destroying everything and burying our mooring again, ending, ending up in Wiseman's Ferry, where we had been for over fourteen months till this flood hit. I haven't been able to work since, um, Valentine's Day twenty twenty-one. I've been tied up on the side of the river. I went to the flood recovery center that was set up in Wiseman's Ferry, and it was an absolutely amazing place. The people were incredible, their, their help was outstanding. Um, we, we received the twelve weeks of money to coming in to try and support us when, when that happened last year. Um, and though I haven't been able to work this year because the infrastructure for me to be able to work is still not in place to be able to pick up passengers, um, I went to the recovery center again at Wiseman's Ferry this year, only, only to be told that because I hadn't earned any money two weeks before this flood, that I wasn't entitled to anything. Um, and that, that was through the central input people. When, when I explained to them that I haven't worked since the last flood, because I haven't been able to, they said, look, I'm terribly sorry, but you don't fit the criteria to be able to get any money. Um, the, the biggest problem with our business is that we don't fit into the box of, of a business affected by flood. Um, we, we, we float on the water, and if we don't work, I don't get paid. Um, I've had no money come into the business since twenty twenty-one. The only thing I've survived on is having to sell my house to pay my bills and, and stay afloat. Um, I'd, I'd like to thank Susan Templeman, I know it's not nice to mention people's names, but she's probably one of the only people that have given me a massive amount of assistance trying to get things done. Um, Mr. Perreté, when he was the local member, also tried, but every government department, I didn't fit into a box of, of a normal business. So, um, I, I just don't know what to do. I'm at a complete loss of whether I'm still in business tomorrow or whether I stayed uptight or posted to Wiseman's Ferry for another twelve months and shut everything down. Thank you for your time. If anyone would like to hear my longest, longer story, please feel free to contact me at any time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Tolson, one of the sons of, um, the, one of the large players in the mushroom industry. We produce mushroom substrate at Mulgrave for approximately twenty-five percent of Australia's mushroom production. Um, during these most recent floods, um, third of March, the- During these most recent floods, 3rd of March, the South Windsor supply for power was cut off because of flash flooding. At a later time, at the 5th, and that then wasn't turned back on until the 5th of March. With the Hawkesbury Valley Way, that was built to be a flood access path for the residents of Hawkesbury, which, yes, it has done that, but with doing that, it's actually reduced the access and egress out of the Mulgrave area. Marlene Hudson's house was resumed for the Hawkesbury Valley Way, and her at the Railway Road North was on basically where the Hawkesbury Valley Way is now. And so the access point for Railway Road North went further north, taking it deeper into the flood area. So that, I would say, the height for flood access and egress out of Mulgrave has been reduced by about two metres since that time. As a business, we've written to the local member and also the council to consider raising Railway Road South, which would then get close back to the same level as where it was. We see that's pretty important, because at Mulgrave, that's the control centre for all the railway line from Richmond to Riverstone. And I guess during this last flood, we actually had to assist railway staff to get vehicles out of floodwater, because they were at work, they weren't expecting it to rise as much, and they got caught in the floods. I'd also say with Bell's Line of Road, that's something that definitely needs a lot of attention. It's the only way of going around. And in the last floods of 2021, that actually got cut off, so there was no access to the other side. And that made it so we weren't able to get mushrooms out of one of our facilities at Glossodia. What it's worth to the industry, it's around about $330,000 a day when we don't have egress out of the site. That's, as a resident in the Hawkesbury, I live at Ebenezer, and I can talk on behalf of the Ebenezer residents. People are very frustrated that they can't do anything with their banks. I know from my own property, I've lost an acre in slump. Back in 2016, I tried going through the red tape of bureaucracy, trying to get approval for stabilisation of the banks, and it just got to the stage where it was just too hard. There was too many government departments, and I just ended up giving up. It just, I'd already spent around about $30,000 plus on trying to get approval, and at some stage, you've just got to walk away. I see many people just go ahead and do it, because they now find it, it's cheaper to pay the fines than to actually go through the proper process, and that really needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mel Olson, please. And then Jake Hargreaves.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to first acknowledge the...
Pull the mic. Okay, good.
I'd like to first acknowledge the Darrid people, the traditional custodians of the land, as a wire-dreary woman. I'm here from the Women's Cottage in Richmond, who provides information, advocacy, and referral for women and children of the Hawkesbury. I guess I just wanted to give an overview of community services in terms of the impacts and what we've experienced. I'm also a local, I was born and raised in North Richmond, so I've seen the area grow quite dramatically in terms of population and diversity. What I haven't noticed a lot of is an increase in infrastructure, in investment in places where people can go to be safe in roads. We're aware of the circumstances, it's nothing new for us in terms of what we experience in the Hawkesbury with the flooding and the fires. But what I feel like needs to change is that there's an investment in services being here, in our area being a priority, rather than other LGAs servicing our region. At a time of floods and crisis, if there are no services and there are no spaces for people to go, because they are cut off, that creates a huge level of strain on current services that are already underfunded, and often are stretching beyond their capacity at these times. And I'd really just like to encourage that the Hawkesbury be seen on the map as an area of its own that has unique needs. We have always been and will always be a rural and remote region. We also have areas where it is built up, but each individual pocket community requires different things. And ensuring that those needs are met appropriately can only be done by the people of that community, by the services within that community, and by locals who understand. I've spent 25 years saying the same thing just alone in my career, advocating for there to be more availability to local services, to have better-resourced community centres, to have things that are available, rather than people needing to travel on roads that are often no good without reception. All these things that are important to people's ability to be resilient are simply not invested in, because it's easier to just do an outreach. But then, when times like these happen, nobody can get to those places that they need to be. And we saw that with a lot of the neighbourhood centres. We saw that we were pushed out as community services from developing an ongoing relationship with vulnerable people. But we also saw that there weren't enough places for people to go when the floods hit, and there weren't transport options for them to get there that were safe. So there were many things that really come down to investment in the Hawkesbury, whether it be business, whether it be community services. But overall, it's really looking at the Hawkesbury LGA as being somewhere that is a growth area. And I guess the experience is that we simply didn't have what we needed, even though we knew that these situations were going to happen, that it was going to happen.
Thank you. The next presenter is Jake Hargreaves, followed by Laura Dorahy. Mr Hargreaves? Laura Dorahy? Jeanette Hayden will be after Ms Dorahy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and I do have neurological conditions, so please excuse me if I cannot find my words at times. I live in McGrath Hill, which is about five kilometres east of Windsor. We don't have water views, we're not near the river. We live in a, is a small suburb, but it is, we were in dense housing. We lived, we would live in a house that was double-story, and all of the houses in our cul-de-sac, in our adjoining streets, are double-story. They have to be, because of the risk of flooding. I believe we're in a one-in-25-year flood zone, and so our houses are actually designed to actually not develop anything in the bottom floor. We walk straight up the stairs, and our living areas are upstairs. Just wanted to give you a little bit of idea of context. In 2021 and 2022, we got the call to evacuate, and we evacuated, as per instructions. Some of our neighbours decided to stay, but we decided to evacuate. We had to evacuate outside the Hawkesbury, once we evacuated Seven Hills, to my sister's house, and once we evacuated to Barrow. What I wanted to present to the committee today is about evacuation procedure. I think we've all done an evacuation procedure, either in our office, or a parliamentary building, or in our school. When we evacuate, we evacuate until we're told it's safe to return. This is the issue. When we get told to evacuate, on both occasions, we never got indication that it was safe to return. So what happened was, and I'm going to, if you will give me a moment, to go back to the 2021 floods. What happened in the 2021 floods is my son was staying with friends, and he went back to our house and took a picture of himself standing on tar. Sure, there were big puddles around him, but he was standing on tar. The roads were open, and we thought it was okay to return. We returned to the house, not realising there was a second wave of water coming up through the stormwater drain. The next morning, we woke up, and the water was higher than what it was in the first phase of that flooding. And I'm going to stand here today and say I take full responsibility for the next part of this story, because I had to appear in Canberra for an inquiry similar to this for the agency I worked for. And I made a decision to enter the floodwaters, to actually get to higher ground. And unfortunately, I contracted bacterial spinal meningitis as a result of entering those floodwaters. That was in 2021. Ever since then, I have had seizures, and just recently, I've been hospitalized for 100 days due to seizures happening three times a day. I now have a functional neurological disorder, that means that I lost the ability to walk and was using a wheelchair, and I, as you can see now, I'm still struggling to walk two years later. Can the doctors make a direct connection between the spinal meningitis and the functional neurological disorder? No. And do I take full responsibility for entering the floodwaters? Yes. What I'm saying is, I'm not an expert. If it looks dry outside my house, I think it's okay to return. So all I'm asking is, if you ask people to evacuate, give them an indication when it is safe to return. Because what we also find is that we have to keep coming back and checking, because we don't know. We don't know whether the water's receded, Facebook's going hectic. We have to keep coming back to check whether the water levels have receded and offer us to return to our house. So all I'm asking for this committee to consider is that there is an indication via SMS to those people evacuated, when it is clear to return to your home, and it's safe to start rectification works. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. The next presenter is Jeanette Hayden, followed by Michael Green Tree.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge all the Indigenous peoples, traditional owners and custodians of the Hawkesbury, and also on behalf of my own Indigenous ancestors, the elders, and all who went before them and those who come after them. I thank you for the privilege of actually speaking with you this afternoon. To members of the select committee and to members of the public, here is my story. I am a pensioner, I'm a war widow, and I turn 71 next week. I live on my own, and I live at a residence that I've been at for 31 years. I'm the custodian of my town block in North Richmond, which backs onto Red Bank Creek, which leads to the Hawkesbury River. In the past, I've consulted with the Hawkesbury and the Napinean Authority, read guidance to my property, and the creek bank, and also the Parks and Wildlife, who informed me that this creek and its banks was a potential wildlife corridor. The floods of 2020 and 21 caused erosion of the creek bank on my back property. My back fence is the actual borderline where the creek meets my property. In 2020, council stated they had no funds to rectify the problem. Again, in 2021, the council did nothing. No one at all inspected the damage, and it was referred to the local land council under a grant for rehabilitation and restitution, which was approved. Sadly, with nothing having been done in the interim, the 22 floods caused the damage I now have, which is a landslide, right to the retaining wall, just nine feet from my back steps. The full extent of the damage that night was not revealed until days later, when the water receded, revealing the landslide. My insurance company for the property damage has sent an engineer and has observed and provided an engineer's report stating that it is a transitional landslide and needs emergency make-safe to protect the retaining wall that protects the stability of my home. The council engineer, when they bothered to come two months later, stated the same. But nothing has happened, and I'm having great difficulty obtaining financial help. In all of my years, I have never had to apply for help or assistance. I lost three-quarters of my backyard, and every time it rains, more of my backyard slides away and goes out to the continental shelf. In this last few days' rain, I've lost another three feet of my backyard. I've been unsuccessful in gaining a grant to repair the damage, or even put towards the make-safe. The engineers have stated it is essential to prevent further damage. Only three trees remain, and the border fences between neighbours gone, steps gone, and nothing for the insurance company to restore the fences, et cetera, as per my property. The insurance company does not insure the dirt, which is, or was, part of my assets. No one really wants to know about it or do anything about it. The only damage they want to assess or to consider is house damage, but the dirt is also part of an asset. The assets are not just the house and the pots and pans. I could not get the SES to come and do the flood damage assessment. Every contact with the SES, the story was the same, that they could not do it, and it changed every time I contacted them. And finally, they stated I had to make an appointment, and eventually they did, and the Hawkesbury SES rang up and cancelled that. During the peak flood, the SES failed to send text message for me to evacuate when the Red Bank Estate Dam looked as if it was going to break. That's a long story that I won't go into. But I was left that night with the SES and their bungling, sending me to the wrong place, at the age of 70, to drive over the Bell's Line of Road, with the beginning of the landslip, the rock falls, and the massive potholes, in the dark, in the pouring rain, on my own, to get to my daughter on the other side of the now-closed flooded Hawkesbury River for somewhere to stay, as my family and friends all live on the other side. This is not about safety, the way the SES treated it, and it's not fair for people who live here. The other issues, to try and cut it short, are relating to the application of the grants. I went down to the flood centre at South Windsor, and I was told there that, yes, you can apply for the two grants. I have only found out in this week, no, you can't apply for both grants, but I was told you can. You can apply for the two, but you can only get one. But the problem I've had, I've been told that as a pensioner, on a pension, my income is too high to qualify for one of the loans, the loans, the grants. I've also been told that my assets are too high, and therefore I can't have the grant. For the other grant, for the back home one, I was told that, oh, no, 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 we're not going to look at this, because your property is a rental property. I've lived there for 31 years. I asked why, this was to my face at the centre. I was then told, but it's a rental property. Why? Because your address is a post office box. I've got a post office box because... You want me to keep going? Yeah, okay, I was actually told that because I've got a post office box, it's a rental property. I've got a post office box so that snails don't eat the mail, and for my own safety and security of my mail. I then had to provide documentation, which they would not accept. They would not accept my rates, they would not accept the utility bills, they would not accept those things. They would not even accept my DVA pension card. They wanted my centring card, they wanted... They wanted my Centrelink card, they wanted my Centrelink paperwork. They were not geared to the fact that someone could be a DVA pensioner. Three times, I had to go back to the SSs. Finally, one of the women at the SES, sorry, not with SES, with Service New South Wales at the Flood Disaster Centre, actually stated to me, well, look, if there's so much damage here, why don't we just sell it back to, the government can buy it back from the Onyekamuths? I was horrified, upset and distressed. I'd already been accused that my own property I've lived at, pardon me, for thirty one years, was actually a rental property. Then they tell me I should sell it now because of the amount of damage, three quarters of the backyard is gone. The reduced price is that I won't get the actual value it was worth. And with the money that I would get, I would not have enough money to relocate. Is this the government's way of relocating us elderly people into retirement? The question has to be asked. Now, I've had nothing but trouble and I've made reports, I've even had to actually make a complaint about Service New South Wales. I've been to the minister, I've heard nothing. I've been to other ministers and it's a case of pass the parcel between the ministers to what happens. It's not satisfactory. This is what they put us through. We're already traumatised. We are not like the businesses and they are ignoring the pensioners and the older community who live on their own. I'll cut it there.
And if you wish, you can table your statement so we can incorporate it.
I've actually supplied a copy to the secretary.
I wasn't sure if it was submitted formally.
Yes, it is, yes. And I'm sorry it's so long, but it is complicated. Thank you.
Mr. Michael Green Tree, followed by Lisa Sullivan. Is Mr. Green Tree here? Lisa Sullivan? Mr. Green Tree. Oh, sorry. Michael Green Tree?
Michael Green Tree.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Green.
I live at Vineyard, I work at Australian Pioneer Village. We've been wiped out both years. Totally unnecessary. Previous government kept twenty percent of Warragamba Dam air filled. That is enough to reduce your flood from thirteen metres to ten metres. Won't affect anybody. That is a greedy government. Three metres is a big difference. That's all it takes to go from a baby flood to a big flood. And this mongrel government wants to put an extra fifteen metres wall on top, which won't necessarily do a damn thing. And the next problem is, it's a sandstone base. Sandstone you can crush in your hands. It is weak. How on earth will it hold back that floodwater? Right now, when that dam is full, at one hundred and five metres of water, it has nine hundred million tonnes of force pressing on it. It would love to push it down to Penrith. Put another fifteen metres of water on it, it will push it down to Penrith. And it won't stop at Penrith or Hawkesbury, it will push it clear through to Parramatta. It will take out Prospect Reservoir at the same time. It will be useless. You will lose all of your water for domestic use. Gone. It will take you ten years to rebuild it. You will lose half a million people in the process. They will be drowned. And we have a government that wants to see that through. Any questions?
I'm done. I think you're done, sir. Thank you for your contribution. Thank you for your contribution. Lisa Sullivan? And then Fiona Grame.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Look, I have lived in Hawkesbury for over twenty years and this year, we had four metres of water through our house and three metres through our house last year. We are still displaced, my husband, myself and two teenage children. There's a whole level of things that are going okay and there's a whole lot of things that are a huge frustration to us. And I've seen the best of communities work together. Last year's flood was a community-led recovery before we were able to get services to assist us, our neighbourhood and our community. This year, we've seen it improve, but there are definitely areas that we can improve from here. What we've seen this year is that we do get on-the-ground help pretty quickly to us. We are based in Windsor. And before the bridges are open and access to our remote communities of the Hawkesbury, we do get assistance. However, that doesn't necessarily roll out enough to our remote communities. We're finding that the layering of not only bushfires but multiple floods in this area has meant that people's mental health here has suffered significantly over the last few years. What we're finding with this flood, the cleanup recovery has been really tough on individuals and communities as a whole. And we did get short amounts of time to have task force on the ground to help individuals as well as public spaces, but it wasn't enough. And the state has done a pretty good job in cleaning up, but there are ways that we can improve on this. Individually, what we see with four metres of water through our house is a slow rise of water and a slow release. What that looks like is our bottom floor submerged and one and a half metres into our middle floor. We do have around about twenty-four hours solid time to get stuff to higher ground and we have a very comprehensive flood plan. That looks like a shipping container delivered and it filled with everything, including the kitchen sink, down to ceiling fans, downlights. We get trades in, we get the toilets out, we get everything out. It is a bare shell. So we have got a comprehensive flood plan. We are aware of, you know, when we bought our property, that it was flood-affected. It was built in eighteen forty-six, it has been through even the eighteen sixty-seven flood. It's going nowhere and it is resilient. We are resilient, but as Michael said before, look, we don't feel that we're getting backing by the dam being at full capacity. The soils at the moment are sodden, there is pooling of water everywhere you look. We are only a day's, you know, a medium-level weather event away from seeing this all again. June is, historically, the weakest and most flood-prone month. So with that comes a whole lot of anxiety and not just for us, our kids, our communities. And we're frustrated with the talk that is happening around about the levels of the dam, but no action. We really need a whole nother level of, you know, something done to give us a little bit of peace of mind that someone's got our back here because at the moment, we have got a plan. Our community is connected really well, we're doing a whole number of things to make us resilient, but we don't have that backing at the moment with the dam. The other level I do need to include is flood insurance. Now, when we bought our property, it was insured, insurable, and it was affordable. After the two thousand and eleven Brisbane floods, they reformatted insurance and it is now upward of around, from fifteen thousand dollars per year upwards. Now, we're looking, we would like to see something similar to the Northern Australia policy that has for cyclones, allowed affordable cyclone insurance for those affected properties. We don't have that for flood-affected properties. Now, the other thing is that we would like to see a flexible flood policy be made available where we can choose, like contents insurance, the amount of coverage that we require to recover our homes personally. They're not floating away. We just need clean-up and recovery costs and that is not being offered by our insurance companies. And the other thing is development on the floodplain. I am sceptical that the raising of this dam has anything at all to do with flood mitigation and has everything to do with housing development on the floodplain. And the one thing that I have also observed in these last few floods is that traditional affected areas by flood, Marsden Park, Box Hill, did not flood in both of those, last year's and this year's flood. And that is because they have sophisticated drainage put into those housing developments, which means that it is additional runoff into South Creek. And last year's floodwater that entered our home was a brown muddy tinge of South Creek water. There is photographic evidence from the sky showing a clear delineation between river water and South Creek water, and that is what goes through our house. The other thing that we had, just to finish off, was five days of raw sewage flowing in our backyard after the floodwater receded this year. That was toilet paper solids, everything in our yard for five days. There was, that was left for us to clean up and disinfect. So at this point in time, we've had enough. And if we don't have any level of support from the state around lowering the dam levels, which was one of the options in the EIS, then, and I'm sick of the talk of no action, we need it now while we're in the middle of Llanunia, big wet season, what other time are you going to do it? We really need action now. Otherwise, this anxiety, this mental health issue that we've got layering up here in the Hawkesbury is real and we've had enough. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Fiona Grame, followed by Jeffrey Faritz.
Good afternoon. It's Fiona Grame, by the way, just to note. Look, I think the best way to start is, you know, what's my context? What am I doing here? I'm not a direct flood victim. So what I did in the twenty twenty one floods, if you saw any imagery with all of those Woolies hampers flying around and all of those goods, that's what I did, that's what I organised and I facilitated, I brokered that deal with Woolworths. And it really highlighted this need for a mass mobilisation and to do it really quickly. So that's what I do. And my husband and I set up an organisation to really sit between local government agencies, local charities and, you know, make them work a little bit better together to get people what they need and then connect that with the private sector who have huge supply of goods and they can do that really quickly through their infrastructures. But I think predominantly, what the real thing that came out about that was, was, you know, there was no real connection between how the charities, who know the intimate needs of the community in these emergency situations, are working with the government agencies. There is really no streamlined response here. And, you know, it's a really difficult situation because you have people who are in desperate need of welfare in an emergency situation. There is no welfare west of the Hawkesbury. That sits squarely on the charity's mountain of joy, Hawkesbury Helping Hands. That's a huge undertaking for those people. And then they have to work in with the government agencies and there's no real mechanism to do that, there's no turnkey, there is a lot of friction. I mean, under the sub-plan for emergencies, under the flood sub-plan, I think four point three and five point six, you know, community resilience and flood resupply, these agencies do need to work with local entities, private individuals. And, you know, whilst this isn't a complaint against those agencies, because we would be absolutely lost without our volunteer agencies and our local charities as well, we do need a way to streamline those together quickly as well. The way that I did that was, you know, through our local members, trying to get access directly with the SES. Because what I think is really important to illustrate here is, living in the Hawkesbury, it's not so simple to just call an SES hotline and as directed by the state member to fill in a Service New South Wales form. Okay, so working with the local charities, we do a lot of data collection basically and filling in and raising requests on behalf of numerous households. For kicks, I tried one with Apocolo, there were eleven households, I filled in the Service New South Wales form for emergency goods. These are things like nappies, formula, urgent things that these people need. Fuel, because their generators are running out, it gets pretty dark out there, can you imagine running for days without what they need? Anyway, so filling out this Service New South Wales form, there was no receipt number, there's no way to contact that. Someone contacted me four days later via phone to see how that need request went. I had already logged that through our system, that we sort of navigated directly with the SES. That involved turning up at the SES doorstep and convincing them that we can help them work with the charities to actually deliver the goods that they don't have access to. So what we have done, my husband and I, is, you know, we have access to these goods to supply people. And that's something the government can't really do. The government can't connect that with the local charities, they do not know the intimate needs and the local charities can't work with those private sectors. You're talking about things like Woolworths sending up twenty-five pallets of perishables, where is that going to go? What quarries does that get juggled between? How is that dispersed? Who has a forecliff? There is a lot to this. We absolutely need these emergency services and streamlined emergency services west of the Hawkesbury. And if that is not the case, then we need more funding to the local charities west of the Hawkesbury. And we actually need these local governments to facilitate their agencies to work better with the private organisations and charities on the ground. That is absolutely something that needs to happen. We need a seat at the table, this is not the table, five minutes is not enough to go through all the data. I mean, I have numerous cases of people in dire situations, peppercorn agency contacting my charity, saying, we haven't had contact with elderly and vulnerable people in Lower Portland since ten thirty PM last night, we need a welfare check. How do we facilitate that? We know that they're running out of food and we haven't heard from them since the night before. So that kind of situation is occurring and that's just one. We have supplied hundreds of households. Last year, it was thousands when we had Bell's Line of Road cut off and people did not have provisions for that. And it's a really important point that I want to knock on the head because people ask, well, you know, why don't these people have, why don't people in need have goods stocked up in their pantry or nappies galore and all of, you know, these things? They don't. There's financially disadvantaged people who live a few days at a time. There are people who just mentally can't prepare and don't have the skill sets for it. We know the government even struggles to prepare for the floods because we are having a different climate at the moment. We are having different weather events, as they so like to call them. So we really need to adapt and prepare these communities better. And we really can't judge, but we need to be able to mobilise the support for these communities better and we need to have a really effective roundtable of how that's going to happen on a logistics level. Because the government cannot do what we've been doing between the charities and the charities can't quite do what we've been doing connecting the private sector. So I really want to take that further.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Jeffrey Faritz, followed by Ms. Tiplman on behalf of Jess McCallum.
Good afternoon. I've been a local in the Pitttown area since nineteen seventy-five. I bought a property knowing it was going to be flood-free. So that was a good plus. I live on Old Pitttown Road between the Sports Club and Schofield Road. Opposite me is the National Park, or as it's colloquially known, the National Sparks and Wildfire. I have seen that road sort of in breathable condition. And I've seen it in poor condition. For a long time, the council could never get the money to do the road up and so quite often, we just had to wear it. After this first flood in twenty one, it got a bit worse. It was patched up by just filling the holes up over the dirt and of course, that doesn't last very long. In this last flood, it got even worse. I had the opportunity from nineteen eighty-two, I think it was, to be the president of Progress Association. And I saw how the town had gone from a population of nine hundred to nineteen hundred in the last election when I was handing out for the Labor candidate. I can only say that the problems that we have with the flood evacuation route is that the government made it a flood evacuation route, but never put any money in it. The road that goes through the National Park is, I walk my dogs up there regularly, is wide enough for one and a half vehicles. In this last flood, as you can imagine, you've heard from other people, it's mayhem. Near my house is quite a sharp corner. I've had my neighbour's, I had two cars through his front fence, only six, seven months ago, we had... Only six, seven months ago, we had a bus come across the road and get jammed between his fence and a power pole and took my corner post out. So when you've got a situation of a flood, people are not really concentrating on what they're doing because they're worried about getting home or getting out. And my concern would be is, one of these days, when there is a flood, and there will be another one, they'll have a bad accident somewhere and then your flood evacuation route stops. What I can say is this, there is a responsibility in a government to follow through on its promises. Unfortunately, with the current government, there's not much happening there, probably because this area is being considered a blue ribbon seat, so they didn't have to worry about losing an election. Thank God, this time they did. I would say to you, why, why should we suffer just poor conditions when there is the ability and money there to do the right thing? The biggest problem, of course, occurred is when the new estate started. All the people there were kind of unrealising, if you get a really big flood, they turn the water off, they turn the power off, and you have the, everybody has to evacuate. Where do I have to evacuate? Well, at one stage it was going to be at Skybowl, but once the National Parks were cut over, that stopped that being an area where people could go. So I believe people had to go as far as Seven Hills. It's a long way to be from where your home is and where, where things are. Why is it that we don't get the information from governments about why their responsibilities are not being looked after? Our road is, as a joke, as you said, it's a good track, tank trap for the army to have a gallop. It is all along the road from Pitttown all the way through to the roundabout, that's Boundary Road. It is pitiful. The only way, safe way to drive along that road at the moment is right down the middle. Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms Templeman, on behalf of Jess McIlve.
Thank you, Chair. Jess has asked me to read this. My name is Jessica, and I've been with my husband David for 19 years. Together, we have three boys, Thomas 10, Joel 9, and Justin 7. My husband and I both come from agricultural backgrounds. We bought our business, A Bog Turf, in December 2018. Since then, we've encountered three floods. Each and every one has been different due to the lack of infrastructure and neglect that we believe Cornwallis and Richmond Lowlands has endured. We understand the risks of running a business in a flood-prone area, hence why we don't live on the farm. Flooding is a natural occurrence, and we believe that it plays a vital part in successful farming. Ironically, we're there for the water, but also the rich farming land that seems to be so scarce these days. Jess, now, I have committed to reading excerpts, so there is now some detail about the history of what's happened and how the landforms have changed since the last flood in, in 1970, in 1994. But she says, "Nothing has been done to improve the infrastructure since 1975, even though it is noted that the increase of water runoff has significantly increased due to development. Unfortunately, the Richmond Lowlands and Cornwallis have and will continue to cop the brunt of this injustice. Our first encounter with flooding occurred in February 2020. The Warragamba Dam was only at 40% capacity at the time. We flooded due to localised water. The unmaintained rivers, creeks and drains failed to operate and still do to this day, and we have no understanding of who, local council, state government, is responsible for them. They are blocked, overgrown and just purely neglected. Landowners have put up their hand to clean them themselves, as they also recognise the importance they play, but due to red tape, they're unable to touch them. Along with poorly managed creeks, rivers and drains, we had a major fail in the outlet drain, which meant that we were trapped for an unnecessary 14 days, resulting in us losing approximately $3 million worth of turf stock." The council owns this outlet drain. And then she goes on to talk about the evidence you heard this morning when you visited Cornwallis about how council's process played out and their decision just to replace, or the fact that they were only able to replace one bit of it, was then hit again in 2021 and then in 2022. And this is how she describes that. "In 2022, we are faced with yet another flood, this time flooding prematurely, thanks to our new bank opening. The gorge has now blown out to an incredible 150 metres in width. The most devastating part of this flood is that all the excess soil that was blown in from the gorge is now all over us. Our crops are smothered in soil and destroyed, some nearly picket fence height in depth. Another $4 to $5 million loss." And she then talks about the second flood that came and how that did even more damage, and that the costs of replanting are extraordinary. And, and she has put detail about that in the entire letter that she has tabled. She goes on to say, "My family have not just suffered financially, but also emotionally. The biggest frustration is that while flooding is totally natural, and the events that have occurred in the last three and a half years are not, every single part of what we've endured could have been avoided, from the neglect of the creeks, rivers and man-made drains to the outlet drain. Without the entire system in working order, we will continue to suffer, and it seems to the entire community that the resolution is a distant fantasy." I'll leave you with these words. "Farming is a hard gig, and I challenge anybody who disagrees to give it a go. While you're giving it a go, throw this situation amongst it and report your outcome. I now have a deeper understanding for mental illness. I have sympathy for wives, husbands, mothers, fathers and children who witness the destruction and total life disturbance. I had a call from my children's school after the 2021 flood asking if my boys need to see the councillors. They themselves couldn't function without getting emotional and distracted. They were broken because they saw their father and their mother broken. They were confused because they couldn't comprehend that if something needed to be fixed, why wouldn't you fix it? It would have saved all this heartache."
Thank you. Mr John Champion, followed by Sophie Devine. Sophie Devine? Oh, John.
Yes, we've been on the river now for 50 years, but lately it's becoming worse, and there seems to be no solution. We, we end up with no power, which is understandable. We end up with no water because power runs out pumps. And then we end up with no communications because the internet goes down. And they keep telling us that, yeah, they've got a tower, but it's, it's unoperable when it's, there's no power there, which in this day and age seems ridiculous. You know, why can't whoever runs it, tell us true, whoever, why can't they put a generator in? Because without the communication, you're lost. Now, we were in the house by ourselves for quite an unsettled amount of time. No power, no water, no phone, no communication at all. And where we live was like an island. The road was cut off up the mountain. The road was cut off. Just behind us, the road was cut off. So nobody could go anywhere. And it, it's becoming a bit of a joke that in this day and age, communications can't be fixed. Obviously, power can't be fixed if it's underwater. But I just think that people really got to take a note and, and look at these things and provide a better service for the people over the Hawkesbury that live out on the river. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Sophie Devine? Sophie Devine? Sir. And the next speaker after Sophie will be Gendy.
Sorry, I've just got a couple of notes on my phone, so I'll refer to that. I am Lisa Zalivan, my next door neighbour. I'm slightly higher than Lil, so you didn't get into my second story. We're back in our house now, without a few essentials, but we're feeling quite good about that. There's just a couple of things, technical points that I wanted to point out rather than a story about myself. We asked at the end of last year's flood for a gauge on South Creek. We'll go into details about how South Creek flooded first rather than the river. So that indication is vital. I don't know why it hasn't happened. I suspect I know why, because it's going to uncover a lot of information about all of the overland flooding from development at Box Hill. So there's that. Low Macdonald Valley, I think you heard that today. And also at last year's flood, there was no indicator at Yarimundi. It didn't seem to be an urgent fix. And then we flooded, and obviously that was vital piece of information. Along with that, there is one personally personalised tool that we're all using. It's made by one man. It was a piece of technology he put together himself, which is called Flood Watch Gauge, which brings in all of the data from the bomb and displays in really nice fashion, very easy to understand. Nobody here used anything else, and I just don't know why that type of data is not available in some sort of formalised way. Sandbags. I called council, I called up SES last year for sandbags, and they said they weren't doing them. I called council this year, and they said it's not my problem. Figure it out yourself. Whereas two other surrounding councils did all the sandbags the day before, Blacktown and Pendleton. I think it's a key indicator. If you think about, you know, how to advise a community that we're about to flood if they have no idea, is their local council actually doing something tangible and obvious, which is pallets of sandbags? We would already flooded. We already had water in when council started doing sandbagging. Maybe not quite, but we were well on our way. So we had to fill them up ourselves. We don't have time for that. You know, there's a pile of sand and sandbags, go onto the local park and get it. You're already, you're already stuck. You're already isolated by that point. But again, tangible thing that community visualises and says, "If council's doing this, this must be important. I must pay attention." Something like that. The evacuation centre at Richmond, I think Linda from Helping, Hawkesbury Helping Hands had to go at 11 o'clock at night and deliver sleeping bags and toothbrushes and, you know, clean underwear. Evacuation centre open, but not resourced. So again, led to a charity having to fill in the gap. One thing that did happen really well is Endeavour Energy this year. Came straight away, put our power, locked our power off, offered to pay, they pay for it this time. You know, you don't have to get your grade two electrical guy there, which is very difficult to get. But what we did have is some cowboys just turn up the following day and say that they were sent by Endeavour Energy. And, and, you know, try and tell everybody that they're there, being sent there. We knew that it was garbage, so we sent them away. But again, preying on vulnerable people, did they do the right job? Were they actually level two graded people? I don't know. I couldn't tell you, but it was suspicious and not great. Going to what Michael said about the dam, Stuart Ayers said on 2GB during the floods that the desalination plant was working overtime because the water quality of the dam was not drinkable because of the amount of waste and debris and green stuff in there. So while we're, while we're flooding and there's excess water, it's not even water we can drink. So to say that raising the dam wall for drinking water capacity and flooding it every time is suitable, I just don't see it. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Gendy? Gendy? Abigail Ball? Abigail Ball? Jenny Carroll?
Please speak on behalf of Jenny.
As long, yes, as long as you state your name, yes?
Hi, and thank you all for coming and listening to us. My name is Samantha Magnuson. I'm a resident of the Richmond Lowlands. I live on the Hawkesbury River, just down from the Richmond Bridge. My property has flooded three times in just over a year. Two of those were major floods. It was underwater in that we were using a boat to get in and out. I was certainly not the worst affected by any means. We evacuated early. We got all our livestock off and, you know, we're relatively unscathed afterwards. But as I, as I sit here today and listen to everyone else speak, I can't impress upon you enough the horror of watching the water come down the river a few hours after water's been released from the dam. You know, you have a flood and we sit out there and we watch it, and then it just goes vroom. And the speed and magnitude of that water with 100-year-old trees being swept down the river is unprecedented. I've lived in the Hawkesbury for eight years, never seen anything quite as damaging as what has happened over the past year. The damage you all saw Cornwallis, that is, you know, that was obviously man-made due to neglect really from the local council, gross neglect. We're seeing that on a different scale in all areas of the flood relief and the flood mitigation. I don't want to go into, you know, a lot of the, you know, the small, the detail about, you know, the lack of services. You've all heard that. You've heard about the damage, you know, the, the loss of businesses. You've heard about people's livelihoods being ruined. You've heard about, you know, businesses that are losing millions and millions of dollars with, with no future. You, you've seen the lowlands, you've seen the water sitting on the soil, people have sold cattle, you know, people can't run their businesses. The heartbreaking thing about this, and I think I speak for many people in the Hawkesbury, is that we're sitting there, listening to the radio, watching the TV, and we're watching a discussion about raising the dam wall. Now, as we all know, that is a highly complex and nuanced issue. It is certainly something that the environmental impact statement has not adequately explained and has not created a silver bullet. It is certainly not a silver bullet to this flooding situation. As you, as you've heard, all the floods are different. The 2020 flood was because of localised rainfall and urban flooding. It wasn't because of the dam wall. What we've got here is, on one, in, in one instance, you've got, "We refuse to talk about using the current dam for mitigation. It's the big elephant in the room." What we should be talking about is how much water you want, we want to take out, not we can't talk about it. We need to be talking about using the current dam as a mitigation dam. It was the recommendation of the Royal Commission in Queensland, and as a result, the Wyvenhoe Dam is now used as a mitigation dam. As you heard earlier, three metres, three metres is the difference between people being able to run their businesses, look after their families and not going to debt to the bank, and people putting up their hands and hopefully somehow still being able to find some work somewhere else. It is an absolute disaster that this is not being addressed. And can I just go on for a couple more minutes? There are, there are two issues with the raising the dam wall and the mitigation, and they're very distinct. One, if you have a raised dam wall, you are letting water out into a flooded river system. Using the current dam as a mitigation dam, you are releasing water before the flood event, based on, you know, advanced, you know, weather data. We have a desalination plant. As I said, the discussion should be how much water comes out of the current dam. We can't wait much longer. You saw the damage of Cornwallis because that wasn't fixed when everyone said it needed to be fixed. We could have another major flood in a few months. It's costing us thousands. You know, we are a very optimistic community out here. We're a very tight community and have become a lot tighter, you know, since since the floods. We've all helped each other out. We've all had to pull together. You know, we have a vision for a great future out here. It is one of the most beautiful parts of the country, if not the world. And you are destroying it because it's being politicised. Don't politicise it. Listen to the people who are in the community, what needs to be done. And the first thing that you can do, as I said, it's not a silver bullet. There isn't a silver bullet to this. Please discuss using the current dam as a mitigation dam.
Maury Smith. Maury Smith. Hugh Perry Okeaton. Hugh Perry Okeaton. Jake Hargraves. Jake, sorry, Jake Hargraves. Abigail Ball? What's your? Oh, Hugh. Hugh Perry. Sorry, are you Hugh?
Good evening. I think Sam has pretty much said everything that I was going to say. It's not about... I've lived in the Hawkesbury for 20 years and have seen minor flooding and major flooding. And we all know it's not rocket science on how we can help the Hawkesbury Basin, let alone the river. And that is not at the last minute going, well, the dam's full, open the flood gates and let it all out. Especially when you know a major weather event has been happening and you're predicting heavy rains two weeks in advance. And we know that because people move their livestock and get ready and move everything out. But the destruction that happens after letting large volumes of water down the Hawkesbury is actually catastrophic. And you've seen that evidence today down at Cornwallis, let alone how it affects the businesses either side of the river. And the economic factors of those and mental issues that that has created in the community, I think, is something that needs to be taken into account because it just seems to keep getting passed on and on and on and the decision never gets made. And let alone building a bridge, that, a new bridge, let's build two that go underwater when it floods. But why wouldn't we? I think we've probably got enough smarter kids in Year Seven Mass to come up with a theory on what volumes of water come into the catchment and maybe release a little bit earlier. But we can't because the flood mitigation of Warrigamba Dam has to be legislised. So to me, it's not rocket science. It's releasing water gently beforehand out of Warrigamba and not punishing the people that are left further down the river.
Thank you, sir. Mr Eddie Darachi?
That's you.
That's you, sir. Thank you.
Do you mind if I stay in a stand? I don't want to turn my back.
As long as you speak into the microphone, sir.
Yes. Can you? Can you hear me now? Okay. Well, most of you don't know me, what I do. I'm an independent councillor. I'm not Labour, I'm not Liberal. And naturally, coming from different parts of the world, we say what comes out of here. And I've already been called loose cannon. So I tell you, that's how it is. We're living in Pitt Town. I was, we were, we were stranded for about two and a half weeks. And luckily, luckily, we had hens. And I dare that, you know, you tried to survive with eggs for about 10 days with bread, with my greatest respect to you all. And I can see our member in here, where are you? I'm angry. And what is our parrot aid? What more important thing that, you know, he could have in here? You're taking all these notes and we've been having this kind of forms for years and years. They were in power for what, 10 years, 15 years? What did they do? When did he come to when we had the floods? We were flooded. I was flooded. And when the silt came and accumulated in front of our house, when I rang the council to ask for assistance, do you know what they said? They said, put a DA. That's what they told me. That's what they told me. They put a DA. And when I started cleaning, in no time, I received an email saying that, you know, I was going to be fined. I said, go to hell, fine me. This council is defunct. That is where it starts. And then we have the parliament. Where is Parrot Ailke? I said, we don't want his grin. We don't want his smile just before the election. Now we have Susan. Hopefully, they will do something different. Now I wonder whether our Liberals will survive the next election as it comes, when it comes to the council. You have no idea. Yesterday, only yesterday, I was on Lower Colla Road. When I came to T Junction, turn left is Upper Colla and right, Lower Colla Road. And this couple that I met, when I tell you how they survived, they had two beach balls. They used them, inflated them and, you know, they could hang on to them. Now, I don't know, you are taking notes, whether it will go to the right place or not. But none of you lived in this area, or maybe some of you. I witnessed these farmers, you know, crying. And now we have a water minister, all he is interested, whatever his name is, all he is interested is sell the water. That's what he is interested. What happens if something happens? If the dam burst? Didn't they, you know, these people read any physics? Raise the wall okay. And they're raising another 10, 15 years' time. When it overflows, then what happens? If we lose one life? I know farmers in here, they lost their animals. They lost their cattle. And the council, that kind of, I don't know what to say. What kind of a defunct council is that? We have a town planner who is not a town planner. We have infrastructure managers and engineers ordered huge pipes and they arrived and the size was wrong. And we pay for it. We have a sewage problem. I raised it, I exposed it. You have to give me a couple more minutes like you did with the others because I'm full up. And we have this problem with the raw sewage. You don't know where it is. I exposed them. Instead of buying two tankers, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, they went and they hired fire tanker companies. Each trip about $2,000. We are up to here, about $7 million. And it's still going on. I'm going there at 5 o'clock in the morning, taking photos. And I'm there at 9 o'clock, last night, 9:32 to be precise. And they were still carting, collecting the waste and taking to the... So it's not only federal government, put it aside, but it's New South Wales Government. They did absolutely nothing. You have potholes. I wasn't growing a farm road. When water comes in, it's nothing like, you've never seen it before. The holes are this big. If you're not careful, you'll drop it up to here. That's how it is. And the interesting thing, I started distributing leaflets. I printed them hundreds and hundreds. Yesterday, I was at Sackville. The day before yesterday, I was at Gross Vale, Gross World and Balmwood Mountains. Guess what happened? I received an email, polite email. Council says, Eddie, please do not interfere with council matters. This is the council that we have. I'm praying God that something happens next year so we'll replace altogether, sack the council, sack the Liberal Government so we can start fresh. I do apologise, but I'm very, very angry. I hope you will do something.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the number of people on our registered list. For anyone who has not spoken but has decided that they want to make a contribution to this inquiry, they can contact the Secretary-at-Staff, the three people over there. There's an online questionnaire where you can make a submission if you wish. Thank you. Sir?
I'm a resident and I'm not registered. My name is Marshall. I'm on Law.
As long as you give us your first and last name.
John Marshall.
Jump up. I didn't check with my colleagues, sir, but sit down.
Thank you very much.
Sir, you just got to get the microphones.
Thank you.
State your first and last name, sir.
John Marshall.
Thank you.
I'm a resident on the Lowlands. I don't want to take five minutes. I think you've heard from everyone here this afternoon that there's serious frustration here. The summary, in my opinion, is the discussion is mitigation. Mitigation, mitigation. Prevention is better than cure. To listen to all of this damage and the cost of this to the community is madness. It's madness. We only have to do a few things. We have to increase the capacity of the desalination plant. We have to dredge the river. And we don't fill the dam. It's simple. I don't want to be flooded. And my colleagues behind me, the residents that live with us, well, we don't want this rubbish. We don't want this water coming down on us. This is a man-made policy. Does anyone in this room know how many people are affected? Can I ask anyone on the committee here? Do we have any idea of how many people are affected on the Hawkesbury River? Anyone else? Can anyone else?
Sir, you have to address your comments to us.
Sorry. Can anyone else in the room give me a number? I mean, I think that's appalling that we don't even know that to start with. It's 170,000 people that have been affected. That's in the government reports. We haven't even done our research. 170,000 people. It's appalling. There's an 8,000-page report. I mean, there's a lot of hearsay, a lot of nonsense being spoken about tonight. I'm not a technician. I can't tell you whether we should raise the dam or we shouldn't raise it down. We've got engineers that should be able to do that. All I'd like to leave you with is that leadership is an essential factor for our community here. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir, for the final words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, but we have, yes, but we finish at 5:30. So one more person after and we'll strict five minutes because we have to finish at 5:30.
That's okay.
Thank you, sir.
I don't go to bed till 11 o'clock.
Sir, state your first and last name.
Neil Tweedy is my name.
Sorry?
Neil Tweedy.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a local business person. I have two businesses. One's an irrigation business and one's a turf farm. Both were flooded in this last flood and the turf farm in the previous floods as well. So we've actually had four floods in two years. I've been here since 1984, so I know a little bit about the area. And yes, we do get floods on the flood plain, as other people have said. So we're sort of conditioned to that. But a lot of people have come into the area in recent years and never seen a flood. So this flood we just had, or last two floods, actually shot across the bow. Because if we get a 1 in 100-year flood, we'll be in water where we are here now. In 1867, the flood was 19.5 metres. This last flood was 13.8 metres of Windsor. So if we're standing in water here in 1 in 100-year flood, imagine 19.5 metres. Now, you'll have people on rooftops and they'll be drowning because you won't have enough floodbath to get them off the rooftops. So while we talk about the cost of not doing anything right now, there's a cost to all the businesses around here and all the people that have been displaced. $84 million in lost turf sales last year, $100 million this year. Okay, so we're all affected in different ways. Mushroom guys and all the people have been displaced. The inconvenience, the cost of doing things, repairing damage, it's absolutely immense. I mean, that hole you saw this morning is probably a $10 million fix. So there's a cost of doing nothing, okay? And there'll be a cost of life of doing nothing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And madam? Madam, unfortunately, you will be the last on line. And we'd like your first and last name for hand start, please.
My name is Jackie Carpenter and I'm a resident of South Windsor. But I'd like to talk to you about something that no one else has brought up. My husband has lived here since 1984. He has run a model aircraft club. He ran the state for 24 years. Remote control planes, cutting-edge technology, drones and all the other stuff that you see that's going on in the drive for our state to be great in technology. We have a club. We're on a flood plain because all the development is killing off the remote control plane clubs in our state. There were 84 clubs. There's not that now. We know we've got to fly on a flood plane because we can't afford to buy a piece of land for some people to fly remote control planes. They're also noisy. So we're happy in our little environment. We make no fuss. My husband's built the club from 30 club members to 160 club members. Average age 65 and I'm the only woman. These guys, their wives have died. They've got, the only thing they hold on to is coming to the club. Our club flooded last year. We're okay. It just flooded up to the steps of the clubhouse. This year, it went through the club, a metre and a half of water. We're not a classified sport. We can't get a grant. We've just dumped $20,000 into 400 tonnes of road base to try and get membership to get back to our club. Five club members have stopped their jobs to sit on machinery that we've had to hire to let our club members back into the club. They have not been in the club since February. We flooded out and we flooded and we flooded and we flooded. And I've been taking documentary evidence about the overflow out of Sydney Water through TransGrid, down Banden Road and into the creek. Yesterday, I had the EPA, Sydney Water, Blacktown Council in a meeting and they're all pointing the finger at each other going, it's not our fault. I want to know where the water's coming from. It's all foamy and smelly. And they're telling me, oh, it's just the runoff. From where? Where? It's tearing the road to pieces. It's like the Grand Canyon. The 90-year-old man who saw a remote control plane flying on the telly and went, I don't try that. Asked my husband, can you teach me how to fly? He goes, yeah. So aged 90, that man gets in his little sedan with his little plane in the back, chills off down to the airfield. We've scraped up enough money to put an electronic gate because our club members have had strokes and they can't operate a padlock. 20 grand in a road. So tomorrow, we can't wait. We're opening up the club. There are so many people hanging out and celebrating. But you know what? There's not one guy. His funeral was last week. And I'll leave you with that. So I don't care about raising the dam wall. I love my community and I love what we do. And we're forgotten in the Hawkesbury.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Now, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our proceedings. And I'd like to advise our fellow members that we have a meeting in the next room.